I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of January 24th or 21st, 2025. And can we all rise for a prayer by Councilman Sakala?
Good evening. In light that yesterday, we celebrated Martin Luther King Jr., I felt it appropriate that tonight, I do one of his most insightful and I think one of his most amazing quotes. "I believe that unarmed truth and unconditional love will have the final word in reality. This is why right, temporarily defeated, is stronger than evil triumph." Thank you.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next, can we have roll call, please?
Councilor Sakala.
Here.
Councilor Crissati.
Here.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Here.
Councilor Ludwig.
Here.
Councilor Mangini.
Here.
Councilor Nasuda.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Here.
Councilor Russo.
Here.
Councilor Santinella.
Here.
And Councilor Ungary.
Here.
Eleven members are present, none are absent.
Thank you. Next, in the event of a fire and emergency, there are two means of exiting the council chambers. Exit out the rear doors and walk a safe distance away from the building, or exit through the side doors, go down one flight of stairs, and out the rear doors of the building, also a safe distance. Thank you. Next, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting of January 6th, 2025.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made in seconded. Are there any comments, corrections, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. And then the regular meeting of January 6th, 2025.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made in seconded. Comments, corrections, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that's unanimous. Tonight's special guest, we have none. So before we move into public communications, I did happen to notice, the picture for our new president, Donald Trump, is not the accurate picture. That is, his previous picture from last time he was in. And this is his official photo that he released for this term. So if we could replace his previous picture with his new picture and give him the respect he is due, I would appreciate it. Thank you. We can pass that down to the town manager. So we will go into public communications. Any person who wishes to address the council shall first be recognized by the chair and shall state their name and address for the record. They shall limit their remarks to five minutes. After each person who desires has had the chance to speak, those desiring to speak a second time will be permitted to do so and shall limit their remarks to three minutes. During public communications, item seven on the agenda, public members shall limit their remarks to two rounds, eight minutes. During public communication, item 16 on the agenda, if prior to 11:00 PM, each person shall limit their remarks to three minutes. Public communication shall be limited to one hour unless extended by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. All remarks addressed to the administration of the town shall be addressed to the town manager and not to individual employees. Public members shall observe proper decorum and good conduct and shall refrain from personalities and language. Would anyone like to come up and speak to the council? Sir. In the white, sir. Yep.
Is this on? Okay. Good evening, members of the town council, residents, and community leaders. I have been an active member of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion, otherwise known as DEI Committee, since my appointment in January 2023. I'm here tonight to urge you to retain and support this vital committee, which has played a crucial role in addressing inequities and fostering inclusivity in Enfield. The DEI Committee was formed in response to troubling incidents in our town. In 2022, a racial slur was directed at a student fundraising in an Enfield neighborhood for the Enfield High Football Team, followed by a threat revealed through a Freedom of Information request. These events led to a community conversation at Enfield High School where Black residents shared fears of exclusion and discrimination. Such incidents underscore the importance of the DEI Committee in building trust and safety in our community. Additional issues highlight ongoing challenges. The shoprite employee hair color dispute sparked discussions about the Crown Act, while a current council member's comment suggesting that, quote, "If they hadn't been spanked as a child, they wouldn't have discipline plop problems," reflects a lack of understanding and compassion, particularly for children with special needs and disabilities. Enfield's resistance to affordable housing, moratorium efforts on affordable housing, comments such as "There goes the neighborhood" and "You don't diversify the historic district" have exposed barriers to equity. Banning the pride flag further sent a negative message of exclusion towards the LGBTQ+ community. As a member of the DEI Committee, I acknowledge that we have faced challenges, including council attempts to control the committee's actions, difficulties retaining members, and disagreements about things like virtual attendance. These challenges, however, are not reasons to disband the committee. They're reasons to strengthen it. Disbanding the committee would be accepting failure, and I will not give up on efforts to make Enfield a better community. A town survey conducted by the DEI Committee revealed significant gaps in representation, equity, and inclusion, making it clear that further work needs to be done. These findings emphasize the need for education and efforts to build acceptance for all residents, including those with disabilities, LGBTQ+ individuals, and people of diverse racial, ethnic, and cultural backgrounds. As someone who's lived in Enfield for many years, graduated from Enfield High School and Central Connecticut State University, and now takes classes at CT State Community College, I bring both personal and professional experience to this work. I worked at Phoenix Mutual in Enfield for five years, and while there, I facilitated and co-facilitated community conversations on race, which revealed insights and positively influenced participants. These experiences have shown me the power of dialogue and education in creating meaningful change. Lack of action by the town council and its leadership committee has hindered the DEI's progress. Two residents applied for open seats, one in August and another in October, and a current member expressed interest in renewing her term, yet no action has been taken. Ignoring these applications sends the wrong message about the council's commitment to DEI efforts. In closing, I urge you to retain the DEI Committee, fill the open seats without delay, and recommit to diversity, equity, and inclusion in Enfield. Let us move forward together to ensure this town is a place where all residents feel welcome, valued, and safe. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Sir?
Thank you. About the DEI Committee. In 1980, in Scotland, Connecticut, the KKK had a rally. The next day, newspapers published photos of a burning cross. And I have to admit, back then, we were shocked. We were looking at these photos, and here was 1980, the modern era, and we're wondering, how did this happen? I mean, it looked like something out of the 20s. And this was Connecticut, too. And, you know, the moment reflected a resurgence of hate in Connecticut during a time of economic stress. Between 1978 and 1980, there were 24 crossburnings across our state, including at least two in Enfield and possibly three, targeting Black residents in our community. And to give you some idea, these warranted no more than stories of maybe, you know, two to four inches. They were just tiny little pieces. And these were misdemeanors. Really, nothing happened. They were done by teens, but they kind of reflect, you know, teens don't, teens are vessels for sometimes bizarre attitudes in communities. You know, we'd like to think those days are behind us, but history has a way of repeating itself if we're not vigilant. Enfield today faces some blind spots, and these blind spots aren't just issues of fairness, they're also financial and reputational risks that you need to consider, and I think the DEI Committee can help you on. Let me give you three examples. The 2017 lawsuit by Sarah Hernandez, a newly elected school board member who's autistic and deaf, requested accommodations to fully participate. The request wasn't granted, for whatever reason I don't know, leading to a federal lawsuit that Enfield lost, which is costing us a small fortune. This could have been avoided, I really believe, if the DIA Committee had existed to flag this issue early and warn you that the ADA laws were pretty impenetrable on this point. The second, the school arrest. In 2023, Enfield had one of the highest school arrests in the state, especially with middle school, on a ratio basis. But the thing that really surprised me, and we submitted two separate foias on this, was they weren't getting the demographic data on the arrests, so they couldn't see whether racial disparities were at play. And if you want to advertise, if you want to set Enfield up for a lawsuit, do two things. Be ignorant of the information about what is going on, and then lead the state in the number of arrests. And as it turns out, there's a story, there was a story in December in the Connecticut Insider, which seemed to indicate that, you know, we're probably looking at a lawsuit or some kind of action over some of our school disciplinary issues, which is, you know, how much is that going to cost us? And then third, you know, I don't, this is a little premature to bring this up, but I'm going to bring it up because I think it's important. I respect the valid points brought on both sides by the flag ban. And I don't want this seen what I have to say next as a criticism of the points being made on the Charter Revision Commission. But I'm deeply concerned about the potential of this referendum, if it makes it to a referendum, to create hostility towards the LGBT community and damage Enfield's reputation. A referendum on the flag thing can go in two directions. On the one hand, nobody pays attention to it. It's just like what they say, a nothing burger and gets no attention. But on the other hand, it could be seen as a, as a, as a kind of a referendum on the LGBT community itself. And that's the thing that scares me, because, one, it's going to generate a lot of bad publicity for the town. It's going to be, it's going to create potentially a hostile environment, and it's going to hurt people that really don't deserve to be hurt. And it's not necessary from a legal point of view, in my view, because other towns are flying the flags, and they're not being sued. And, and new councils can take this up on their own. But that's just my opinion on that. But a DEI Committee could investigate the potential impacts of such decisions and help you, guide you to a good decision. These examples just show that ignoring equity and inclusion doesn't just hurt people, it hurts Enfield as a whole. The cost is real and it's preventable. And let me be clear about this. Enfield's DEI Committee isn't about hiring quotas or politics. It isn't about the things that are dominating the national discussion. It's about making our town better for everyone. It's about identifying the blind spots in our community, like those that led to the Hernandez lawsuit, and addressing them before they become a crisis. I urge you to support the DI Committee, and, and, you know, in reference to John's remarks, yes, it's not an easy committee to be on, because it's not like the ZBA where they get a list of things and act on that.
Patrick.
Okay. But anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick. Sir in the back.
Kyle Bell for Stanley Drive. Members of the town council, I'm here tonight to express my deep concern and disappointment about the agenda item 13C, the resolution to repeal the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. Growing up in a small town in Ohio and moving to Enfield, Enfield has become a second home to me in many ways in the last seven years since moving here in 2018. I have invested in this town by becoming a homeowner, becoming a commissioner and director for two boards, serving on the fire department, and top of my full-time job promoting agricultural investment across the Northeast, including talking with key stakeholders like members of Congress about agricultural issues and diversity and inclusion among members of the LGBTQIA+ community that work as agricultural professionals. As a member of the LGBTQIA+ community and proud member of the Enfield community, this consideration and possible enactment will have a ripple effect for the foreseeable future and beyond. As families look to communities to move to, start a family in, and companies looking to invest in, including myself, and possibly raising a family here, they are looking at many factors, like what the local town count, or local town culture is like and who's running it. The list goes on and on. They do their research. One of the first things that pops up are the recent articles about the new town policy about flags on town property. And during that consideration, a member of this council using a derogatory term towards members of the LGBTQIA+ community, which many found offensive. I asked the council, why are you wasting your time on this when there are bigger issues in town and items that affect all residents of the Enfield community, like waste infrastructure, roads, economic development, and ever-rising taxes? Again, the list goes on with real issues the town council needs to act upon. Another suggestion, the respect and decorum among members of the council, I believe, takes higher priority. Watching town council meetings, I am dissatisfied and disappointed that members conduct themselves the way they do towards each other, sometimes, and each other, sometimes towards members of staff, and at times, I believe, towards the members of the Enfield community. It is very disheartening as a member of the public to see the town council members act the way they do during town council, downtown council meetings. In closing, I strongly encourage members of this town council to vote down the repeal of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, as it will have a negative impact on the future of the culture of inclusion among the Enfield community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Maureen?
It's Kristi.
Oh.
Kristi.
Chris, come on, sorry.
I don't think I have to do much with this, it's so big. That's mine, I just wanted you to know. Okay. Okay, am I on? Thank you. This is Chris Lang, 90 South Road. Moved in in 1954, graduated from Enfield High School in 1970, and am living here now. When I was a kid, 90% of the single family.
Well, now it is, oh my gosh. Sorry, should I repeat? Okay. I've been here a long time. I've watched single-family homes still be 90% owned by white folks. When I got here, I had already become a member of SURGE, which is showing up for racial justice on the West Coast. I decided to try it here. I was delighted when we decided to work on this DEI proposal. I was the one who brought it out from the public and read it into the record. I have that here. I have, in the last at least half year, gone to more DEI meetings than some of you liaisons have done. I challenge some of the comments about your reasons why you want to disband this committee. First, the main problems are not that people are chewing on each other and hostile, they are talking about projects that they have no funding for from you. They also have no support from you. You've been orphaning this group for about a year. Quite literally, you don't fund it, you don't set up meetings, you don't show up at meetings, and when people need to apply and have applied, you don't deal with the applications. So let's just say, there's a hostile environment that's here, and that's very tragic. Secondly, I've been hearing about the liabilities that are very expensive when you have lawyers that are hundreds of dollars an hour that you're dealing with in terms of issues that the DEI deals with all the time. If you don't like the name DEI these days, use something else. Use belonging, dignity, and justice, if you like. We're not here talking about a committee that's trying to train personnel or change your workforce, although that could happen. It's a group that's supposed to help people in the community. It should be something that you honor. It's really annoying to think about something that was such a good idea with such high hopes, and it doesn't get cop, you know, here's the thing. You will not put most of your committees and commissions on YouTube. You call it a funding issue. I call it a transparency issue. So how does the community know what the DEI could be doing and what they could be doing with it? They can't see it. They can't see any of it. If you're focusing on issues of not enough people, what happened to all your other committees, commissions, subcommittees, agencies, and so forth, of which I've counted something like 53? You have vacancies, expirations, and empty seats that affect 33 of these. Thirty-three. There's 70 vacancies right now, if you don't count the JPs, the justices of the piece, that would make 107. Let's say 70 if we don't count the JPs. Why are you focusing on the DEI when you have problems with all of your committees? Please take care of the people in this community who are Black, White, Gay, and not Gay. Don't show up as people who hate this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else? Ma'am?
And I was going to try to speak from my, my heart, but I am just going to read it. So hopefully, I won't miss anything. Can you hear me?
Nope, now you're off.
Put it on again.
Press it again.
Press it.
Press the button.
Okay. Is that better? I don't hear anything.
Is the red light on?
Yeah. Oh, it is on. Is that better? Okay. So I'm just going to read it. My name is Rosalynn Swift. I live at 14 Gary Drive, Enfield, Connecticut. I was sad to hear of the resolution to dissolve the DEI Committee. I have just a few questions for us to ponder on. Is there something wrong with having a diverse community, representation, allowing all people to have a voice? Is there something wrong with desiring that everyone have a fair and equal opportunity to succeed? And notice, I did say, have a fair and equal, equal opportunity to succeed. Notice, I did not say everyone deserves the same outcome. This has been said, this is what equity means. This is not what I mean, and everybody I know, that's not what they mean. Because everybody realized that everybody are individual people, they're intelligent, and they have every opportunity to reach their full potential, which not may be the same thing. So the idea, I don't know where that really came from, that somehow it means that if you make a million dollars, then no matter how you figure it out, I'm supposed to make a million dollars. I just don't understand where that idea came from. We all need to have a sense of belonging and inclusion. There are a lot of buzzwords being thrown around. Woke, cancel, culture, gaslighting, alternative truth, brainwashing. I kind of want to pause at "brainwashing." Is there something wrong with teaching African-American history about their culture and shows and tells the great things that they did in this country? I would just suggest perhaps looking at blackinventors.com. Millions, literally millions, of inventions that I had no knowledge of knowing anything about when I was growing up. I didn't read about it in history books. I didn't know anything about it. There's a lot of things about the African-American community other than slavery. It's not all about pointing about how you did this wrong, that wrong, and, you know, trying to fuss and fight and argue. What's wrong with it? What's wrong with sharing that kind of history to our kids from elementary all the way up? So, and like I said, a visit to the blackinvention.com would show you all the many contributions For me, I feel like I'm starting at a late age, African-American. I've lived in this town 45 years. I've worked in the community. I've been here, I've been there. I want the community to be better. I want it to be great. So I did a lot of things. It's kind of overwhelming right now with the atmosphere, and I'm not quite sure why we have to fight about things, rather than have a conversation about things. Hearing both sides of the issue, and then realizing that I might be wrong in some areas, you might be wrong in some areas, and then literally coming together, instead of just pointing the finger and saying, things are not like this, or I'm saying, yes, they are. I mean, no one was willing to even have a conversation about it. No one was willing to even talk about it. Oh, this is just a little sidebar. A good movie out right now, The Triple Six Eight or something. I mean, that's a fantastic movie. And it's so simple. I mean, it's so simple, and it's so heartwarming of what a group of African-American women.
Your five minutes is up, but you can come back up a second time.
Oh, I thought I was just going to read right through it, and it wouldn't be five minutes. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else for the first time? Seeing none, Roz, or Rob?
It's like Alan Drug with the spinning chairs. Anybody remember that? No, huh? Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Tonight, I'd like to speak about both the Board of Ed and the Town Administration Accounting Systems. I have six issues that I'd like to address. The newly adopted policy of monthly meetings and expense reporting by the Board of Ed, Department of Ed. The possibility of, the possibility of monthly balance sheet and income statement reporting to the town council. The internal controls review, excuse me, the yearly financial audit, the idea of transparency and uniformity for both the BOE and Town Administration Accounting Systems. And finally, the most importantly, the $10 million budget overspend. So I think the new policy of a monthly review of Board of Ed expenses is a good, is a good policy. It's transparent, and if there's a problem developing, it can be caught early because it's, it's a monthly, it's a monthly issue. I would propose that we take this a step farther. Preparation of a monthly balance sheet and income statement would be even more transparent, especially the income statement. This would allow for itemized expenditures with descriptions of the expense, rather than just a grand total with no itemized descriptions, as is the case now. And it's just monthly, not yearly, so it wouldn't be overwhelming. Also, I feel that both the BOE and Town Administration should have uniformed reporting standards. Changes and improvements for the BOE should also be applied to the Town Administration. And this would also hold true for the recommendations received from the upcoming internal controls review. I realize municipal accounting and financial accounting for publicly traded companies is a I realize municipal accounting and financial accounting for publicly traded companies is not an exact overlap, but hopefully the Internal Controls Review will recommend GAAP principles, at least to the extent applicable. I also feel, as was mentioned a month or so ago, that the auditors performing the yearly financial audit should present a summary before the Town Council. Now, the final issue, the $10 million overspend by the Department of Education under the leadership of Mr. Dreszek for fiscal year 2024. I understand the bailout had to occur. I understand that employees have to be paid. But what I don't understand is the lack of accountability for the party or parties involved. The problem, as I see it, is simply a $10 million budget overrun. The Department of Education spent more money than they had. They spent more money than they were budgeted or were allowed to spend. The reason for the problem is just as clear, and that is irresponsible financial management. All the excuses, the ARPA money, the sped costs, the state grants, these are not reasons, these are just distractions. The reason, as previously stated, is irresponsible financial management. The spending did not have to occur. Cuts could have been made, and eventually cuts were made, but it was too late. A responsible executive works within the allowable budget and makes spending cuts and staff reductions as needed, and it's not always pleasant. In my opinion, this issue should be referred to the District Attorney's Office. The DA should determine whether or not an investigation should occur, whether or not a forensic audit should occur, whether or not the actions of any particular individual were a violation of the law. This is a $10 million overspend. It's 13.3% of the Board of Education fiscal year '24 budget. It's 6.5% of the total town budget for fiscal year '24. That would be a 6.5% tax increase if we chose to recoup the funds. Accountability should be required, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the first time? Okay, second time, Mrs. Swift, would you like to come back up?
Yes, and I'll try. Where I left off.
This time it's three minutes, Roz.
Okay.
Can you just...
I think it's on, so where I...
Can you just repeat the name of that movie you referenced?
Six Triple Eight or Eight Triple Six, Six Triple Eight.
It's Six Triple Eight.
Six Triple Eight. Okay, thank you. Now start her time.
It was just so inspiring.
So she doesn't lose time.
So heartwarming. I have it written down here. And then, so where I left off at, there's been an unwillingness to come together and discuss things from both sides of the divide. Personally, I sent many emails, many emails, trying to talk about where we could move forward. And I also know there were applications waiting to be processed that were never processed, mines included, as far as signing back up. And I just think that everyone should feel comfortable in our town, have a sense of belonging, and that our community should be opening and welcoming, place for everyone. And I do realize this is a touchy, touchy subject, and it is very hard. You have to be willing and want to, to work together and have compassion and understanding of other views. So I just hope that we can continue, and I do believe it is a positive thing for our community, if those that are involved is sincere, have compassion and empathy, and a betterment for the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
John Malinowski, 1302, big old comments. I just made a few quick notes. I recently watched the October 22, 2022 meeting when the DEI Committee was created. The vote was, at that time, eight in favor, one against, two abstentions. I noted that no arguments at the time were given against the merits of the committee, not one. The one individual voting against creating the committee did so because they expressed lack of a budget as their primary concern. The two who abstained said that they needed more information. And in fact, one of those who abstained said three times they were in favor of the committee. As mentioned by one of the speakers tonight, the DEI Committee has no authority over hiring, none. But as I look at the current Town Council, there is not one person of color represented in this town. That's not to criticize anyone, just stating a fact. The schools need to hire teachers who reflect the growing minority population. Children with special needs and families who support them need to have a voice in this town. Seniors and those with disabilities need help and support. Education on race and diversity are opportunities for DEI. Every culture and community needs to be welcomed and encouraged. Please, for the future of Enfield, vote to keep the work that the DEI Committee can do. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Are you coming? Seeing none. We'll move on to Councilman Communications. John, start down with you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I want to, I'm going to hold my comments about the DEI Committee for that part of the agenda. And I don't have anything specific to report, but I do, Mr. Bukowski, I do feel like I have to address your comments. And first of all, I did get your note, and thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. First of all, you know, I think we need to be very careful here about the accusations we make against people and what we accuse people of, because honestly, first of all, there was not a $10 million error. It was somewhere in the neighborhood of $7.9 or $8 million or something like that. Not that that's a small amount of money. But you know what? I've learned a couple of things in the last few weeks. We aren't the only town in Connecticut that had a similar problem. And you know, towns all over the state ran into the same issues with the same shortfalls, and they paid the bill. And I'm going to tell you right now, the state of Connecticut budgeted $181 million to fund special ed for this fiscal year. The bill is $80 million above that. And so what's happening? The percentage of the money that we get to subsidize special ed is going to be, on a percentage basis, decreased because there's an $80 million hole in the budget. And just like you and I budget for our homes and you think that things are going to cost a certain amount, and when they don't, what do you do? But you certainly can't run around accusing people of criminal activity. It's wrong. And quite frankly, you know, I think this community is a little better than that. Maybe there were things we could have done differently, and we're working on doing that. But come on, before you start telling the world that somebody has run off and stolen millions of dollars and has a house on an island in the Caribbean, like, that's just outlandish. And you know something? We have to start being better than that. We're going to have an audit that's going to look into what happened, and so we can understand it. And I think we all here want to understand what we could do better, what processes we need to do better, and I think everybody here is very well-intentioned about that. But sometimes things are more expensive than you think that they're going to be. That's just the way it is. So I really just wish that you and others would stop with the finger pointing and stop with these outlandish accusations, because I don't think that's what happened. And I really just, there are other people whose families and lives are impacted by comments like that, and it's not right. So that's what I have to say about that. I have nothing else tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Councilman Sacala?
Thank you. First, John, Pat, Kyle, Chris, Rosalyn, thank you very much for your comments. I too am going to hold most of my comments regarding the DEI when we get to that. But John, you nailed it, almost everything you said. I mean, I printed out the resolutions too. Like, you nailed it. Like Mr. Santinella here, I struggle with trying to figure out when you need to stop giving something life because of its untruthfulness or continue to address it because of its untruthfulness. And I caution the public, just how we are cautioned up here, is when you're on the microphone and you start saying things that are untrue, people are going to believe what you're saying. So if you come up and say numbers like $10 million and that is not the number, it has been very clear that that's not the number, but you continue to push that number, just because you continue to say it, doesn't make it true. And the Board of Education doesn't have the benefit of, let's say, the Town Council and our budget. Just tonight, you'll see things coming out of our fund balance. That wasn't in our budget. We're overspending our budget. We have a savings account that we can draw from. The Board of Education doesn't have a fund balance that they can draw from. So if there is something that we either want to do that we didn't put in the budget or an unforeseen expense that comes out that wasn't in the budget, then we use fund balance money for that. So that's all I'm going to say about that. I just, it's, John said it well, we have to stop making accusations about things that we don't know and spreading untruths. Last thing is, I think, through the mayor to the town manager, or actually, honestly, it may be to the mayor, I don't know, so you guys will have to let me know. So for the school modernization resolution, the pre-K referendum resolution on our last meeting. So there was a draft, and then there was the final version that we voted on. My understanding, and I know this, is that there was a draft, changes to that draft were made, and then we voted on the resolution that was passed our last meeting. I guess my question is, who made those changes? Who was, who was the back and forth with that said they didn't want the three through five grade administrators, the PK teachers, three through five teachers, five electors? So I want to know, like, because I don't know. So if, I don't know if the mayor has this information or if, Chris, you have this information, but there is a draft version that had different things in it than the version that we voted on. And so I want to know who either made the changes or rejected the resolution as it was originally written. So if somebody could answer that, that would be great.
You want me to answer it now?
Whoever has the answer would be great.
So the superintendent sent over the original document...
The draft, yep.
Which was exactly like JF Case. And there were six council members and six Board of Ed members. We reduced it to four and four, removing the liaisons, having them act, having two of the actual members act as liaisons.
I'm sorry, who's "we"?
We all got the original draft emailed to us, or your leadership did. We did. Okay.
That wasn't my question.
Oh, no, 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 you've got it. That was your question. So we all got the original one, and we were asked, what do we want to do with it? I received responses. And those responses were sent to Steve, to the superintendent, and we worked it back and forth.
Okay.
I never received one response from your side.
So that, so that's not my question. I appreciate that, so thank you. But my question is, and I'm assuming, so tell me if what I'm going to say is wrong. You received this resolution.
No, we received it.
You received it, you sent it out, right? Then you received back some suggestions from your caucus.
From the council.
Okay.
It's not my fault.
And you just said, no, 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 no.
It's not our fault.
I have the floor.
You guys didn't respond, Gina.
I have the floor, right?
You asked me to answer your question.
No, I actually said, you didn't answer my question, and now correct me if what I'm saying is wrong. So you received, because you did say you didn't receive any feedback from us, so the agreement would be the feedback or the changes that you were given were from your caucus. So is what you're saying is that the Republicans, or you guys, made those changes and then sent it out to the Board of Education, or did that get funneled through the Town Manager's office?
It did not go through the Town Manager's office. It was directly with the superintendent and, I believe, the chairman of the Board of Education. And we took all the input from the original resolution, feedback, everything we received, and we sent it back to the superintendent because it was the council's concerns. I can't force people to read emails or force them to respond or force them to criticize changes that we were making. So we moved forward because, like this school modernization that's been dead for three years, we want to move it forward.
Okay.
So we waited, so we waited, and we sent in the changes, and that was the final resolution that came to the floor.
Okay. So the answer to my question was yes. So what I'm saying is, in your email to the council, you didn't ask for feedback, you didn't ask for anything, but that is not even my point. My point is, then, the Republican Town Council was then negotiating directly with the superintendent and the board chair about a resolution than that we did. That's all I wanted to know, because I didn't know, right? So I don't know if it was something that Chris, the town manager, did with Steve or something that you did. So now I have that information, and so thank you very much. That's all I have.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for that information. Just, I don't remember receiving an email, getting input. I gave my input that night on what I thought should have been changes within that resolution. So to say that we weren't included, I don't think we were, but...
John acknowledged you got the email, or he got it anyways.
Okay, well...
That's a failure on your leadership, then.
That's besides the point.
It's not besides the point.
Well, it is. Just let me just go through a couple of lighthouse keeping, and I have a couple other things that I do want to mention. First of all, February 1st, Allied's having their fundraiser dance benefit Special Olympics. I want to say thank you to people who have already purchased their tickets and people who will be attending. It's at Twin Hills Country Club, so if you're still interested, you can either contact myself or Mike Vigdon at Allied. Through the mayor to the town manager, can we have Eversource look at, on the corner of Oliver and Enfield Street? A few weeks back, there was an accident and the pole was destroyed, but Eversource did put the pole up. I had a couple of constituents call me up and say that the light is not working, and it's a pretty dangerous corner there. So if we could take a look at that, I said that I would mention it tonight.
We will.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. The next thing that I just want to quickly mention, and this really came out of our Joint Insurance Committee, and once again, we're talking about... joint insurance committee, and once again, we're talking about the claim fund balance. Once again, this is money contributed to both the Board of Ed and the town employees for their health insurance, all right? And actually, this was established years ago when this money was depleted. So this is the main reason why this committee is formed. We've been meeting. I know that there's another meeting that's coming up in February. The Board of Ed does need a particular total from the insurance, our agent, in terms of, you know, what that percentage is going to be. And I'm very concerned about the, that claim fund balance, which is a bank account, and I would just like to confirm that the town is approximately carrying the amount of funds for the claim fund balance based on the number of employees of the current and projected claim experience moving forward for this next budget cycle. To our knowledge, we are deficient. $800,000, I believe, on the, on the board side for that claim fund balance, and they want to know if they are going to be reimbursed in terms of getting that claim fund balance up to the total that it's supposed to be at. Okay? So if we could just make sure that when our agent comes, that he's prepared to give us those answers so that we are fully aware of it. Okay? All right. All right, thank you. The other thing that I want to mention, that this Thursday coming up, we have a charter revision meeting that's coming up at 6:30 in the Skidaco Room. This is to the mayor. I don't know if you had talked to your caucus side, or, or in general to us, maybe you're going to bring it up later. I know at our last meeting, we brought up possibility of, of, you know, what it would be to televise the proceedings.
Reports of special committees.
Okay, I'll come to that. Yeah, okay, but I just wanted to just bring it up, just to remind us. Everybody that came up and spoke on the DEI, it's great to see you. You know, we spent a lot of time and effort into getting this committee going. It's rather disheartening that it's up, I didn't realize that it was going to be up for possibility of this, you know, repeal. You know, yes, there is people that have resigned, yes, there are people that are still on this committee. The bottom line is, and I'm going to talk about this later, if there's, if there has not been an attempt to fill those vacancies and people have applied, that's wrong. That's wrong. And so, to just say that we're going to get rid of this committee because, you know, it has vacancies on it, well, a point was made that there are a lot of vacancies within our boards, and, you know, but once again, by fostering inclusivity and providing guidance in issues of diversity and equity, you know, we spent a lot of time and effort to getting this committee off the ground, and I think that it would be detrimental moving to say that we're going to get rid of these three resolutions that were passed. But I'll talk more about that as, as time goes on within, within the meeting, you know, in regard to the, the charge of the committee. So, but that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Cindy?
Thank you. Excuse me, first, I'm losing my voice. I want to thank the Enfield Fire Department. We had a small fire at our house the other night. My grandson put a pillow on an electric heater, caught on fire. Long story short, they were superb. They came out very quickly, not only made sure the fire was out, but they checked the outlets, they checked the wall, they were extremely thorough, very considerate, and I just wanted to say thank you for the professionalism and the speed that they got there. I do want to request through our mayor and our town manager, if we could start putting available committees on the agenda, so that we can start soliciting for people that may be interested in some vacancies, we need to get the word out, like my colleagues have just mentioned, so people know that there are opportunities to serve on different committees. I do want to mention the Best Buddies Group at JFK received the Best Middle School Chapter Award in the state of Connecticut, thanks to Mrs. Santinella and Mrs. Simone, the two special ed, not only teachers, I'm going to say angels and directors of that group. They're phenomenal, and they've invited the group and the children to the Board of Ed meeting on the 28th to speak on the Best Buddies Program. So that's something we should all be proud of. And then finally, our mayor did receive a thank you from our sister city in Taiwan, and I happen to be here, when they came as our guests. We have two sister cities, and I was able to get some information on it. One is the one in Taiwan that did come, and the other one is Sweden. And this one is Taiwan City, the Republic of China, Taiwan, and they, they gave us gifts when they came, little tea boxes. So on the cover of this thank you note is a tea symbol describing their tea, I think they produce in their, their country. They want to thank us for the support of their diplomacy, friendship has taken a significant step further in the past year, and they say that in the coming year, they look forward to continuing working together with us to create more fruitful exchanges and to welcome a promising future together. Happy New Year, sincerely, Mayor of Taiwan City, and I can't read the name, it's in cursive, but it looks like Sam Chong Ching, and it's a beautiful card. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing that forward.
No, thank you, Cindy, because I couldn't pronounce half of the words that were in this, and you were the nice one to take this up for me. But they have been a great sister city with us for many, many, many years. Go ahead, Bob.
Ken, I thought it was a birthday card for Cindy.
Oh, there you go.
Happy birthday, Cindy.
Happy birthday, Cindy.
Just in a different language.
Happy birthday. Are you all set, Cindy? Thank you, Cindy. Jim, anything?
The only thing is, I'd like to talk about adding an item to a DPW agenda. Want me to do that under...
Reports of special committees, please.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the mayor to the town manager, the notify me application that's front and center on the website, if I could just talk about that briefly. I think it's a great resource and tool for everyone as far as being invested in the community, being engaged in the different activities that go on within town. Since I've been sitting on the council, I've received a couple reports that the notify me application that people have subscribed to hasn't worked out exactly the way they wanted, they're not getting the notifications, or they're inconsistent with it. So maybe if we could just check on that, I don't know if it's an issue maybe on the front end, software issue, maybe IT can look at that, or if it may be an issue on the back end where information just isn't getting entered, or getting entered timely for all the activities and the events. If that's the case, maybe I would just ask kindly if you could send out maybe an email or a notification to all the town entities to remind them to put that information there, it's very important to the people that are paying attention. So notify me, they kind of notified Jeff, and now I'm notifying the town manager with that, so if you could just look into that, appreciate it. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Just a couple things, through the mayor to the town manager, can I get a status on the drainage at the high school, the drainage project at the high school? Not sure where we are with that. And I want to bring up, spring is coming soon, so I might as well, I did have a constituent ask me about Powder Hollow Baseball Field, not my favorite topic, but I was wondering, will they be playing baseball there this spring? Or he was wondering, so I'll put it out there. Also, this is a question about the, I brought it up last time, looking for the school audit, where we are, if they've started that. I see it's on the agenda to pay it. So this may be a question of, do we always pay before something is started? Or is it, they start it, then we pay them after? Just asking for my own personal knowledge, I'm not aware of that. And also, I guess, I did have one other question. I know it's a state road, but we had our first snowstorm, and I want to thank DPW, the streets were great around me, so I had no problem there, but Elm Street apparently was, I was on at 5, and they said it was pretty rough, so I'm just asking for, I know it's a state road, so I'm just asking for the constituent. That's it, thanks.
Thank you, Bob. Councilman Ludwig?
I'll be brief, just, again, I'm on the insurance committee with Councilor Society, mentioned earlier, Steve, I don't know if you want to comment, but I think, you know, I mean, John does work with the Board of Ed, our Director of Finance, and I just, you know, I want to make sure the language is clear, as we're talking about being transparent. It's not a fund balance, it's actually IBNR, it's reserves, you know, and so, yes, I mean, as a, I think they, we'd like them to have more robust, but John does build that in, that's part of the conventional equivalence. The board does work with John, and I just think, maybe if you could give, and I think some of the things maybe we go back to, we haven't done this, where, you know, we have quarterly meetings with our carrier to go over utilization. Unfortunately, trend is up in every health, health line of business, excuse me, every line of coverage. And, you know, and again, as we've talked about at the meeting, you know, again, there really hasn't been any benefit changes for like 10, 15 years. Trend goes up every year, utilization goes up every year, and when your benefits stay the same, sort of like the stop-loss mentality of leverage trend, well, I mean, sometimes you fall behind, and trend is higher than it is. So I mean, I think there is a meeting coming up, the town does work with the Board of Education and with the superintendent, so I don't want anyone to think that we're not, because we do, it's a joint, there's a joint committee, and, but I think there is, you know, again, I think there is, there's, I mean, a medical trend, anyone who has health insurance understands, you had trend they're dealing with in airline of work. So unfortunately, it's sort of the nature of the beast right now when it comes to cost and health insurance. So if you could maybe talk about that, Steve. And again, just want to be clear too, just, again, we're being clear here, the Board of, as I meant, the Board of Ed does actually have a contingency fund, it's not certainly our level of a contingency fund, but they have 2% of their budget that they can have every year carry over, which is approximately $1.4 or $5 million in their budget, so they can, but they also can spend that, it's up to them how they spend that money, that was reinstated by our council about five years ago. They had it years ago, then it went away, but then it came back in. So just to be clear, as we're talking about, you know, again, funding and where money's going, they do have a fund balance, they can keep 2% of their budget carried over year to year. Again, that's up to them, just as we have a contingency fund and a fund balance that we use to balance our budget. So I mean, I just want to be clear with people that, you know, again, they do actually have that, that's up to them to manage it, not up to us to tell them how to manage it. So that's on them, and they're, they have the discretion to manage it the way they do. So, thank you.
Couple of things, so, mentioned up here that there's, there's, looking up here, there's nobody of color. We do have a female of color who is on our Board of Ed. She ran, she was successful, and she's doing a great job. And I am sure if somebody from, of color wanted to run for a town council, there would be not a problem. But you have to run to be sitting up here, and it's not easy, I'm not going to tell you it is, but you do have to run to sit up here, it's not appointed. But again, we do have somebody of color who sits on our Board of Ed. And I think the same goes for our teachers in our schools. If you don't apply for a job, you can't be employed. There's nothing, I can't believe that if you go and apply to be a teacher and you have the credentials, you're not going to be looked at and be hired. So I guess I find that really offensive, that, I do, you can, I mean, it is what it is, but if you don't apply, you can't be hired. If you don't run, you can't sit up here. That's the way I see it. From our mayor to our town manager, I did some research, I know Octane had a hiccup, but it's opening up pretty soon, the cannabis, and I know Zenleaf, I see them working on their, their building. I know in the beginning, I believe that there was a state statute that how many could open per town, I believe Enfield, we were going to have two. I did some research and, I guess my, my thing is this, and again, I don't have a problem with them, it's, I am seeing more and more smoke and vape shops opening up in Enfield, and I live right there on the Mass Line, and there are six within a mile. I don't want to see that happening. So, I didn't know if you had any insight on the state statute on that, and again, I saw it in several places, I've been trying to do my homework, but if you could just get me some info on that, I'd really appreciate it, Chris. All right, thank you very much.
All set? Thank you. Okay, so the first thing I want to start with is, I watched the previous Board of Education meeting, shocking to say the least. So, you're going to hear it from me directly, the pre-ref committee, every single school we've done, JFK, Enfield High, the original committee, which is teachers, it's administrators, it's council members, it's Board of Ed members, it is everybody within our school system, gets together and puts together a plan of the direction they feel the schools should go. And that includes possibly redistricting, closing schools, building new schools, moving schools, what schools to use, what schools will qualify, what they need for space, because none of us up here know that. But that committee worked hard, 100%, and there is a whole bunch of information to digest. And Enfield High and JFK, they passed the baton to the pre-ref committee. It's been done on every school, and it's being done here. Now, the original committee, we're saying we're going to throw the baby out with the bathwater. Well, that original committee is the one who said $170 million to renovate the schools, or 200-plus million to build three new schools. So we took the $170 million, with everything that was included in that price tag was from that committee. Now, it moves on to architects and engineers, and the state of Connecticut, what schools will qualify, because they have to have so much land. And Enfield High and JFK moved to another committee. So to say we're not using the same committee, we have never used the same committee, because it's the next phase of the project. And once that project's done, and it goes to referendum, hopefully we get it for November, if not, maybe the beginning in the spring or something, but our goal is to get it on the agenda, on the ballot for November. Then, if it passes, it gets moved to another committee, which is called the Building Committee. Now, this committee is full of people like electricians, and architects, and engineers, and, you know, we've had one of the most competent people run our last two committees, they came in under budget and on time. And I personally want to thank Randy Dagel and everybody who served on those committees, because they did work tirelessly. And, and you can't forget about the beginning committees, which we just finished for the pre-ref. Now it's going to the next one. Now, the Republicans have chose the two members, because there's four council members, and we're doing two Republicans, two Democrats. Board of Education, two Republicans, two Democrats. We're not picking the Democrats, they are. I personally have spoke to Bob, and thought him being a teacher and having background that maybe he should take one of the positions. I've also talked to Charlotte on the Board of Education, and asked her to get us their four members. And I've also spoke to members of the public. It is on the town's website, it has been on the town's website, for the members of the public to fill out and apply to be on this committee. And I spoke to members, Republican and Democrat, to apply, that I think are very vocal within our community through Facebook and all of that, so they will help get the truth out there, what this next committee is really doing and what the voters are voting on. Because the misinformation is incredible, incredible. So the committee is moving forward, as the last two schools did, we're looking for the public members, so please go to the town website. public members, so please go to the town website, hit the dropdown, and it's there. Put in, and let's get this committee rolling, because November's going to be here before we know it. That is exactly what's happening. Nobody can challenge it, it's all history, feel free to come in and look it up, that's how the last two schools were done, and that's how the grammar schools are going to be done, the same exact way. So, moving on to misinformation, the gentleman came up, $10 million. Well, it was 10 million, it started at three, then it was this and that, and we settled at 6-point-something million, almost $7 million. You know, it was, you know, ballpark, kind of like when Councilman Santinella said last meeting, that we laid off 120 teachers in last year's budget. Can, can I ask, what was the exact number of teachers to date that were laid off? I think it's somewhere around 30. Not 120, 30. So when we start throwing misinformation, okay, and this is the way that their party plays, throw enough crap on the wall, eventually something sticks. So let's get the real number of how many teachers were actually laid off, because he said $120 million. He also said-
120 teachers.
Huh? 120 teachers. He also said that the state of Connecticut cut special education. He is absolutely right, and I am looking forward to him working with the Republicans at the state level, because the Republicans at the state put forward a budget that funded 100% of special education. Look it up. I'm not throwing out misinformation, please, look it up. So he has said, he is going to get this town 100% of the special education money.
I never said that. I never said you were going to get 100%. So don't start making stuff up, Ken.
Okay. So, he's going to get, I don't know what now, but, so, but his party runs this state, and has run this state for many, many, many years. So to blame us for not funding education, when this particular council has given the Enfield Board of Education more money in one year than any council ever in the town of Enfield, ever, but we cut education? No, we didn't. The state of Connecticut, your party, cut education. So, we talk about misinformation, I'm tired of letting it just go, and it's time to start firing back and put the truth out there. Everything I just said, if you do your research, and I'm not talking about looking at the open forum on Facebook, I'm talking about pull the minutes up at the state, call your state representative, call your senators, ask them what is really going on at the state, and you'll get the truth. And again, please, fill out an application for the prereq committee, because we all want to get this moving so it's on November's ballot. Thank you. Moving on to the town managers' report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, public, those at home, good evening. In regard to the insurance question, and I thank Michael for you elaborating on it, you are a subject matter expert on insurance, and I appreciate the background, because we did have an occurrence in town several years ago, where it wasn't funded enough from the Board of Ed and the town said, we had a deficit in the millions of dollars, and Bob alluded to that. Our monthly meeting, Steve and I meet with Steve Macchio and Andy Longy of the Board every month, and we're very concerned about the insurance costs coming up for the budget. Increases are being projected on the healthcare side of about 16%. That's a lot of money. So, we have had quarterly meetings, I know the insurance committee, the joint, had met, but Steve, it's good, a new set of eyes, he has a lot of questions on reimbursements, he has questions on Medicare, that, you know, the town bills, and we keep the money, yet it's their salaries for their, so, we had an issue last week of a car being used to do certain courier service that became unavailable. Steve worked with DPW and the Board to accommodate them without spending money to replace it. So we're working, I think there's a lot of procedures, and I, to Bob's point as well, I hope that the audit does give us some recommendations that are useful for both the Board and the town, that will help us moving forward. But we have a meeting next week with our insurance people, with the superintendent, the assistant, myself and Steve, to really start putting those numbers together. If we need to convene the other Board thereafter, we will do it, but we want to do it sooner than later, because the budget, we're already, we're already starting to prepare it and have been for several weeks. In regard to, happy birthday Cindy, in regard to your question about the agenda and listing vacancies, as you've heard, there are about, I mean, anywhere between 30 and 40, or even 50, depending on how you assess it, for boards, commissions, agencies. We used to have it on the agenda, but we were killing about five big oak trees every month to do it, because to list them all took about, front and back, 10 pages, nobody could look through the agenda and find out what we were really discussing. So what I would suggest, we do have it on the website, we made special note and popped it up for the prereq committee, which will continue, so we'll look at that. Your rules and procedures, change the agenda, to remove it from here, I think it's so long and confusing, that what I would suggest is perhaps when we do the budget, excuse me, the agenda, every other week now, we would, will include, separate from it, but we'll put up together with it the clerk, to alert people, look at, these are various boards and commissions that have vacancies, if your interest is, let us know. So we'll, we'll advertise it, so when people look at the agenda, they might look at that, but we won't have to cut down a forest every month to put it on our agenda, if that's acceptable, we'll start that for the first meeting in February. Steve is going to elaborate on the insurance, and also, I think he wanted to talk about the posting we have on the website for our vacancies in boards and commissions as well.
Just really quickly, Sheila and I were just looking, we have 73 vacancies right now for the boards and commissions. Virtually three clicks of a mouse, and you can find any board or commission that has a vacancy, and if you want to apply for it, you can go through that process, you fill it in, and if anyone has any problems going to the website, let us know, but it works fine, we just did it while we guys were having this discussion. And then, nothing else to elaborate, I have the, our insurance agent, like you said, coming, and the vice president of the company coming, we're sitting down with the superintendent and assistant superintendent, and we're going to start crunching numbers and seeing, every month that we look at these numbers, we get experience, so hopefully that our levels are going to start dropping. We just took a snapshot in time when we had that meeting, but every successive, successive month can lower that, hopefully, cost, so, this is a work in progress. That's all I have.
And, go ahead, Mr. Mayor, and then I'll, I want to remember to answer Bob's question on the audit.
On that, Steve, when Bob and Mike and you muddle through what this is, because I know this is Mike's specialty, Bob's been following it, I'm going to be honest, I'm lost, and I know some of the Board of Ed members are lost. Maybe we can bring it to the next joint meeting with the Board of Education, so the entire council and Board can get the information from both the liaisons, John Wilcox and Steve, and try to all get on the same page, because I'm going to be honest, I look at Mike and I ask him what's going on, so-
I agree with you, Chris.
I trust in the people who know what they're talking about, so let's get the information out once we have it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
And then, councillor or Councilman Hendrickson asked about, it sounds as though we're prepaying for the audit before we do it. I don't think that's the case, we'll elaborate with John, but much like any of the consultants or anything, we have to have the resolution authorizing the money upfront, so we then, when we talk to them and we sign the contract, they know that there's funding to do it. John doesn't give them a check upfront, there are guideposts and, you know, milestones, and when they conclude it, John, and we can ask him what the payment schedule is, but we don't pay them upfront, it's that we, we commit the money, so you all know where it's coming from and how much it is, and so the public knows, and that's what we, it's just really to be transparent, and to take it from the one account, to have it available when it is done, and we do have to pay them, we have the funds available.
You're welcome.
All set, Chris?
Yes, unless there are any other questions, thank you.
Okay, Town Attorney's Report.
Yeah, I have nothing of an urgent or emergency notification to let anybody know, other than with Marie, your question, we'll certainly research it and get back to you through the town manager's office. And just a ray of sunlight, the application deadline for the Assistant Town Attorney position ended Friday, and there were, there appeared to be some good prospects for us to have somebody coming on to give us a hand down in the town attorney's office relatively soon. So we're happy about that. And again, we do answer as best we can individual councilman questions as they come up, and I think we're pretty much caught up with now handling that, so, that's all I have.
Okay, I also have a question, Tom. Can you give us an update on how the agreement is coming with Shipman and Goodwin and Winsonia? Because they want to try to get that wrapped up, I believe that was for the TIP money for the additional 10.
Yeah, the, the agreement, just so everybody refresh their recollection, I think it's a cost credit agreement that was farmed out to Shipman and Goodwin last summer, and Shipman and Goodwin has completed it, and I believe they sent a copy to our office, we received it last week sometime, and turned it over immediately to the town manager and the, Mr. Wilcox, as well as, and I believe it was sent on to Winsonia, so it's, I believe in their hands right now. The manager may be able to answer that better, but that's, yeah, apparently, Shipman and Goodwin had completed it last summer, but it had not been transmitted to us until last week, for whatever reason, but it's back in the pipeline now, as far as we know.
Okay.
Thanks.
So tomorrow, maybe, Chris, if you can look into that and see that Winsonia does have it? I'd appreciate it, thank you. All set, Tom?
Yes, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tom. So, next is reports of special committees. Bob?
Yeah, just, just a reminder that tomorrow, or actually Thursday, is the Charter Revision Commission meeting at 6:30 in the Skid Row Room. I know it was brought up at our meeting as a possibility of discussing it to be televised, and what that cost would be for the six meetings that we have remaining.
So, obviously, the Skid Row Room is not a live room, so can the council get a cost of what it would be to have Alex or Crew record these meetings, and get the town council the actual cost before we make a decision blindly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
That's it? Yeah, that's okay. Jim?
Yeah, I was wondering if we could add an item to the DPW committee agenda, which I'd like to add an update on three water treatment plant projects that are currently ongoing, and just an update and status of the projects, that's all.
I mean, I would say like a recurring line item, you know, update on pump stations, because we have so many of them going. I mean, Bob, you guys had a bunch, you started, and, you know, let's find out where they're at. So, Mike, I think we're even back to where you had a bunch going, so, yeah, consensus to put it there?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Cheryl will add that. Mike?
On behalf of the General Governance Committee, I know this has come up, Gina, please make sure I say what we discussed. You know, it was mentioned earlier about the marijuana stores, that we're supposed to get community funds from them, so I guess if and when that occurs, can that be sent to the General Governance, where we, again, as we're working on the lawsuit money, how eventually we're going to spend, you know, spend that? So that's, we figured it'd be a good spot to send there, and then make recommendations to the overall council. Am I capturing what we spoke of?
Yep, I would second that.
So Councillor Sikala and Councillor Hendrickson, and I know that we haven't got any money yet, I think, in that fund, and I believe, keep me honest, it's got to be a separate revenue fund, right? Similar to the, to the lawsuit?
Mm-hmm.
Right, so it's actually, so it can be tracked by the public, it's a separate revenue fund, so again, it'll go to hopefully, you know, things that the legislation intended that money to go for.
So, along those lines, we did have public hearings and meetings with the company, and I don't want to use names, because I don't want to give credit to anybody or take it from them, but the one that's not open, well, they're both not open now, but the one who's under construction right now, has done everything they were supposed to do with the town. They're not open yet, but I do believe maybe we should send them through General Governance now to form those. The other company that is not open, or no longer open, has not had any meetings with the town, they have not done anything, and they did not fulfill their building permit process, and I believe there's issues at the state, and that's why they are not open. It's not because the town's difficult to deal with, it's because we have a process you have to follow, safety, and they didn't do that. And I personally will say, I think the building looks like an eyesore in the middle of our commercial district. This isn't the town, a city of Hartford, this is the town of Enfield. And I'm kind of sad that they chose to be a partner in our community, and they think the outside of that building is representable, represents what our community stands for? It's an embarrassment, and I want to say that publicly. So, again, when they do decide to follow the rules to stay put forward, if we can direct them, because I know they're supposed to deal with me, but I would prefer, if the council gave consensus, that I just send them to General Governance, if you guys are okay with that.
Yep.
Good?
I mean, that's where the opioid settlement on the-
Absolutely, yep, and it shouldn't, but that's, the state says so.
We're hoping to have a recommendation on the opioid, hopefully, within a month or two-
Right.
-for the council.
Because I know that the current place hasn't even had their public hearing yet, so, you know, I think there are quite a bit to be done, so, that's a good point, Mike, bringing it up. Anybody else reports a special, oh, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Pisner?
That's fine. Commission on Aging, the last meeting I went to, I guess there still is some money outstanding from donations that seniors gave, the Senior Minor Repair Program, I guess there's, you know, they said they still have not gotten any guidance on how they can spend that money. So if we can just check with John, I think Cindy has some knowledge of it as well, if we can get some finality to that, they, they just want to know, okay? And the second thing is, as is an invitation, Veterans Council, as everyone knows, every year, they do the Four Chaplains Mass. This year, it will be February 9th, once again, 10 a.m. Mass at St. Patrick's Church. It is an absolutely beautiful mass, a beautiful reminder of four wonderful, wonderful men who gave up their lives to save so many others. So, all denominations are welcome, but if you can fit it on your calendar, February 9th, 10 a.m., St. Patrick's Church for the Four Chaplains Mass, thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Anyone else? Okay, seeing that, we're going to move on to unfinished business, there is none, new business, the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Point of order.
Go ahead.
So, we, we agree on Item F as well, if you wanted to add Item F to the consent agenda, this was giving the town manager the authority to sign an easement, we, we were fine with that, if you wanted to add that to the consent agenda.
Well, just leave it the way it is, and-
Okay, that's fine.
Because that's going to be too second.
Okay.
It should have, we should have done that in leadership, but, yeah, you're kind of our consent agenda guy.
I'm just trying to-
No, I know, and, yeah, you, right, you missed leadership, so Cindy, shame on you.
Fresh.
All right, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded, roll call, please.
I'm just there.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Sorry, Sheila. Okay, it was unanimous. Next is appointments, town council appointed. The first one is Board of Assessment Appeals. A vacancy exists due to the resignation of Donna Dubinowski, Republican. Recommendation would be until 12/31/2025. I'll entertain a motion for nomination.
Want to nominate Danny DeGray, Daniel DeGray? Oh, sorry, Marie, did you want to do that?
No.
Okay.
And I- And I'll second it. Motion's made and seconded. Are there any other nominations?
Move to close nominations.
So move.
Motion's made, all in favor of closing nominations? Opposed? Okay, roll call.
Councillor Sikala?
Four.
Councillor Crissati?
Four.
Councillor Hendrickson?
Four.
Councillor Ludwig?
Four.
Councillor Majini?
Four.
Councillor Nasuda?
Four.
Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner?
Four.
Councillor Russo?
Four.
Councillor Santinella?
Four.
And Councillor Angier?
Four.
Eleven in favor, none against.
Thank you. Next is the Board of Education, a vacancy exists due to the resignation of Peter Genitis Jr., recommendation is Dean- the Board of Education. A vacancy exists due to the resignation of Peter Genitis Jr. Recommendation is Dean Grousse. Gause. Replacement would be until 11/18/2025? I do not have.
It's not in here.
It's not in here, okay. So I did reach out to you, John, gave you his phone number. I don't know if you had a chance to speak with him.
I did.
You did, okay.
So moved.
Motion's made?
Second.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Are there any other nominations? Motion's made and seconded, all in favor of closing nominations? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilor Sikala?
Four.
Councilor Crissati?
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson?
Four.
Councilor Ludwig?
Four.
Councilor Mangi?
Four.
Councilor Nasuda?
Four.
Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner?
Against.
Councilor Russo?
Four.
Councilor Santinella?
Four.
Councilor Ungeyer?
Four.
Ten members in favor, one against.
Congratulations, Dean. Make us proud. Next is the Library Board of Trustees. The term of office of Marion Maruca, Democrat, expired 12/31/2024. Recommendation is sue Angers until 12/31/2027.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any other nominations?
Will they be closed? Second.
Motion made, all in favor of closing nominations? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilor Sikala?
Four.
Councilor Crissati?
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson?
Four.
Councilor Ludwig?
Four.
Councilor Mangi?
Four.
Councilor Nasuda?
Four.
Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner?
Four.
Councilor Russo?
Four.
Councilor Santinella?
Four.
Councilor Ungeyer?
Four.
Eleven members in favor, none against.
Thank you. And then we are moving on to a resolution to repeal the Town Council's Resolutions 6396 and 6504 and 6679, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. The Town Council adopted the Resolution 6396 on October 3rd, 2022, creating a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. The Town Council adopted 6504 on February 13th, 2023, approving the committee's statement of committee and appointing the members thereon. The Town Council adopted Resolution 6679 on August 21st, 2023, approving revisions to the structure of the committee, the appointments of two alternate members, and an appointment to fill a membership vacancy. The Town Council wishes to consider the repeal of the above referenced resolutions. Be it resolved, the Town Council hereby repeals Resolution 6396, Resolution 6504, and Resolution 6679, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. Date prepared 1/17/2025, prepared by me. Ken Nelson.
So moved.
Okay, the motion's made and seconded. John?
Yep, so I think that there's been a lot of frustration around this committee and, you know, hoping that the promise of it would have come to fruition in a whole host of ways. And, you know, there's a lot of dynamics that are taking place here. The committee hasn't felt supported, and I think there's been issues with the membership of the committee, and, you know, I think we can rehash all of that. It isn't working as it was intended. However, you know, the hope was that we would have a fully functioning committee. And, you know, when things don't work, you don't have to destroy them. You can work on fixing them. And I'm disappointed that this is the direction we're going to go. I think this is a meaningful committee. I think it can have a positive impact on our community. And I'm frustrated that this is the course that it's going to take. It is true, there have been people who have applied to this committee. We haven't entertained, we haven't had the opportunity to entertain those applications. And so, you know, I think it's been a fait accompli since, for some time now. And, you know, we are, we as a caucus are not, we're just not happy that this is the direction that it's going, but we don't have really the opportunity to make a change here. So, you know, I'll be voting against this.
Thank you. Councilman Sikala?
Thank you. Not to belabor the point, but I will also be voting against this. It's frustrating, and it's honestly really, really sad that this is what's going to happen. I'm looking at the membership right now, and there's only one active person. Two people have, their terms have expired. And there is one, two, three, four vacant member seats and two vacant alternate seats. They can't even, they can't even hold a meeting, even if they wanted to, because they couldn't have a quorum. And it's true, people have applied, and those applications have been put to the side because this is the ultimate goal, is to disband this committee. And that makes me really frustrated and really sad, and I wish that there was something more that I could do about it. Again, I wish that John was, Mr. Malinowski was still here, because he put it so eloquently, that really, we should be, we should be putting more energy and more funding and more activity into this committee, because we had such a wonderful vision for it, and so did the vision, like, so did the people who were on the committee. They wanted to do wonderful work. I don't know that they were given the opportunity to. It hasn't even been established for a full two years. It's, it sucks, really. That's all I can continue to say. And I hope that if it does get repealed, that we have people come out and voice their frustration and their desire to have a committee reinstated.
Thank you. Councilman Crissati?
Yeah, I'm not overly, I am not happy about the direction that's going and repealing all of these resolutions and getting rid of the DEI committee. You know, once again, I would like to know, you know, why did people resign from this committee? Did they not feel wanted? Did they not feel supported within the group? Was there pressure from, from the council's side? I don't know. I just think that we are sending, this decision is sending an adverse message to our community. And this message undermines our commitment to equity and inclusion. You know, we look back on, you know, last year's budget, Board of Ed budget. A position that was cut was the Director of Educational Equity. Position was cut due to budget. Now, that's, that's at the high school. Are there groups that are still working, the DEI version, for LGBT community, kids with disabilities? You go right on down the line. Yes, they are working it. And for us to not give this group an opportunity, or why weren't people allowed, or why weren't their applications brought forward to us, that I do not know. I don't want this to be a political decision, but once again, we worked pretty hard at developing this for our town. And once again, it saddens me to think that we are going to repeal another decision that I feel is important. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mangi?
Thank you. I am very distressed by this change. The committee is frustrated, has not had proper direction. I'm looking at our mission statement. "To foster diversity, equity, inclusion in our town and school district by encouraging an environment of respect and excellence in which community members can nurture their identities while having empathy and understanding for the diversity of others, promoting critical thinking skills regarding personal bias, encouraging active learning growth, continuously improving our town's diversity, equity, inclusion." That's what Enfield is all about. Then we go on to talk about responsibilities that the committee shall appoint a chair, vice chair, et cetera. But also, it says that the committee shall prepare a report every period of time, no less than six months. The council may also request the committee provide recommendations on specific topics. Now, what this says is that we are to be engaged with this committee. And that has never happened, and there has been tremendous pushback, pushback, pushback in addition to not looking at applications or reviewing applications or accepting applications or even advertising for members. This is wrong. What we need to be doing here is, okay, you've got a problem with the committee, let's figure out how we can resolve the issue. And besides that, what message are we sending the kids? Enfield High School, United Sports, is hosting a Choose to Include Day tomorrow, January 22nd. The special day is about creating a culture of belonging and unity at our school. Our incredible unified students will be in the cafeteria to distribute Inclusion Lives Here bracelets, inviting students to sign the Inclusion banner. What are we doing as role models for our kids? This is Enfield High. The same is happening at JFK. We, as leaders of the community, as adults, need to be role models, not throwing things to the wayside when things aren't going our way. So I am going to vote no, but I would also like to encourage council to maybe go back and brainstorm and figure out how we can make changes to allow and encourage this group to go forward. I'd be happy to help out with that, quite frankly, because I feel very passionate that in our times, in our society, everyone is so angry with each other, so much at each other's throats. It shouldn't be that way, especially in our community. We are a community, Republican, Democrat, independent, whatever. We are a community. So that's how I feel. Thank you.
Councilman, Deputy Mayor Pisner?
So I was very much in favor of DEI, and I was the liaison for the Republican Town, or Republican Council. I went to every meeting. I had great respect for Brandon and Monica and Roz. They were working tirelessly. We put on a young man who was there to represent disabilities. He never showed up at one meeting, wouldn't take phone calls, didn't know what happened to him, okay? We had a young woman that was chosen to represent the Hispanic community. She came to maybe one meeting and then said, unless we gave her remote, she wasn't coming anymore. We weren't doing remote. We weren't, I mean, it just wasn't going to be feasible. I went out, I replaced, I found, I found someone, I was working to get somebody. She went to several of the meetings and basically called me and said, "I'm not feeling really comfortable at these meetings." She said, "I actually got asked by somebody, 'Why are you even here?'" So she ended up leaving after about six months. People were just not showing up. They wouldn't answer their phone. Brandon quit, Monica quit, Roz and John kind of took over. There was no direction which way they were going. They weren't, they didn't have a plan. All they kept asking for was, "Well, we need a budget." And I would say to them, "Well, what do you want to spend the budget on? I can't go to council and say they need $1,000 without telling them what you're going to spend $1,000 on. And Steve, you went to almost all of these meetings." I mean, I started feeling frustrated. They changed the dates of the meeting. A lot of the meetings, I couldn't attend because I had another meeting to attend. And I would go there, and there wasn't a quorum. So it was like, okay. They were down to two people. They just started getting applications. I think they got their first application last August for somebody. And then that person unfortunately was getting sick, and they were held back on it. The other thing I found with this committee is everybody had their own personal reasons why they were on it. This committee was representing the black community. This person was representing the LGBTQ. This person, if you really, really want to talk about being inclusive, we, they should have all been supporting everybody's. They never went to what you're talking about today, Cindy. They didn't go to those. They didn't bring those up at the meetings to let people know they were happening. Those are happening individually without DEI. Those are happening in our schools because we have good teachers and staff that are fostering that in our schools, not because DEI went and said, "We want to start Unified Sports. We want to start this." DEI did one thing, and that was to do a survey on how people felt in town. And the survey was so skewed, the same person could have done it 10 times. So at this point, nobody can come forward and give us a direction that they even want to go in or what they want to do. We'd go to a meeting, and they'd say, "Well, we want people to run for boards and commissions." And I'd say, "Well, tell them to sign up for them." You keep saying advertise for them. Cindy, when do we advertise? We have a website that says there's openings. We don't put ads in the paper. So I'm frustrated with it, too, because I did go to all the meetings, and I had nothing but respect for those people, and I wanted to help. But I'm not going to go and listen to everybody argue. That's ridiculous. So I am in support of dissolving it, because I do think that our town is diverse, and I do think our people get treated. And if there is an issue, we handle it. We don't let it go by the wayside. So those are my facts.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Pisner. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'm just going to say. Go ahead.
Thank you. Piggybacking on what Marie said, there's been a lot of frustrations with this committee for a myriad of reasons, and a lot of them you discussed. But I do have a statement that I would like to read that is prepared. That there are many state, federal, and local laws already in place that guard and protect our residents from all forms of racism, discrimination, and bigotry. There are federal, state, and local laws that provide our residents with equal opportunities, regardless of race, religion, or sexual orientation. I do not endorse racism, discrimination, or bigotry in any form, and I do believe in equal opportunities for all our residents. However, there are elements of DEI that do not bring people together, but rather by the design of the program, it tends to divide our residents by focusing on our differences. And this is not healthy for our community. Therefore, with this in mind, I can't support the DEI committee. I also want to add that the flag that we fly on this town hall, that it unifies all of us, and it has 50 stripes and 13 stars. What's more unifying than that? That includes all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, did you want to speak?
No.
So I'm just going to say, again- So I'm just going to say, again, I'm going to put the facts out there. The DEI has been, or has imploded for over a year. There hasn't been a quorum. There's no people. The applications that just came in wouldn't get them to a quorum status. So they're still defunct. We are not dissolving the DEI. The DEI dissolved itself. And, you know, bottom line is DEI is just a, it's a dead-end initiative. That's what it stands for, because they're failing all over the country. I mean, the best person for the job. And if we want to get rid of, you know, racism or anything like that on an application, it shouldn't have male or female. It shouldn't have race on it. But they do. So in today's current age, why can't we just do an interview without video? I don't need to know if you're black or white. I don't need to know if you're a man or a woman. What I need to know is, are you the best person for the job? And that's the person who gets it, period. When you have a fire chief in California saying live on TV, when they ask them, do you think you could carry out a full-grown man? And she says, well, I would hope he'd know how to get out of a fire. This is the fire chief. Is there a problem? There's a serious problem. They imploded within. I didn't support it back then because we don't need this. Our police department, under the one incident that was brought up, that keeps getting thrown in our face, our police department did a full investigation. They made arrests. I don't know what the outcome was, because that is not up to us, but our police department did every single thing they were supposed to do. But they were attacked for it. And that's unacceptable. The arrests in our school, are you kidding me? We have more arrests in the city of Hartford? Or maybe we report. We put the information on paper that other people are afraid to do because it backfires on them. And if the state really knew how bad certain school districts were, they might get penalized, like us coming out of the Alliance District, losing money. So this imploded. This isn't anything this council did. You guys gave it a shot. I commend you for that. It didn't work. And if we were to reappoint the two people right now, plus the two appointments, they still don't have a quorum, because there's many people on there that disappeared. They didn't resign. They don't go. So you can't replace them and budget. Cindy, great words, but you're the liaison to the DEI committee and you've never come to this council asking for a budget or an update or anything. So to sit here now and say, this council didn't do anything, you didn't bring anything to this council.
No.
Okay. So I am all in favor of, there's no sense to appoint people to a committee that doesn't have enough members to move forward. So I'm in favor of dissolving, rescinding those resolutions. Are there any other questions? Go ahead, Cindy.
If I may just make one last comment. I did not come to council looking for money, because as Deputy Mayor pointed out, when we asked the group, do you have a budget? What do you need it for? There was no plan.
I understand.
Okay. So we can't come to council like that. However, on their defense, I will say that council, in looking at our directions from when we started the committee, could have and should have, you know, looking back, given the committee more direction, more opportunity to explore different avenues of subject matter. And I'm not talking the police department. The police department does a stellar job. They don't need any committee. But, you know, as far as the group having opportunities to work on issues, and again, who knew back then when we started this committee that that would be the direction? So again, there are reasons why it failed. And I'm simply asking that we go back to the drawing board and give it another month and say, okay, guys, you want people on the committee? Get some people on the committee. And let's figure out where you want to go with that. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Sikala.
Against.
Counselor Crissati.
Against.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Against.
Counselor Nusuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Russo.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Against.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Seven members in favor, four against.
Thank you. Next is a resolution to remove the sidewalks on the westerly side of Martin Terrace. The Department of Public Works respectfully requests to remove the sidewalks on the westerly side of Martin Terrace, create a five-foot-wide snow shelf on the easterly side, and realign the easterly sidewalks to follow the road alignment. There is no budget impact. Recommendation is we approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council allows the Department of Public Works to remove the sidewalks on the westerly side of Martin Terrace, create a five-foot snow shelf, and realign the easterly sidewalks to follow the road alignment. Date prepared 1/16/2025, prepared by Donald T. Nunes, Director of Public Works. Good evening, Donald.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. Donald Nunes, Director of Public Works. Martin Terrace is on the roads 2021 replacement list. It's a candidate for reclamation, and it's currently in a design phase. For those who know where Martin Terrace is, it runs between Hazard Avenue. It's a one-way street that goes northerly, and it connects into Elm Street. This is North Street Cemetery. Down on the bottom left, just for reference, is the public library. And just up to the north here is the senior center and the police station. Let me get back. So again, at the aerial view, we have, you come down Hazard Avenue, you take a right or a left into Martin Terrace, and it is very narrow and there is no snow shelf on either side of the street. This is a very similar situation to Green Manor, when about, I don't know, 15 or 20 years ago, town council made it a point to get rid of those. The next time that the roads were done, there was a whole plan that was designed and done through engineering. And it's sort of the similar vein where we're again removing one side to be able to create a snow shelf and provide some relief for those people, because there's no place to put the snow and the like. And also, there's also this kind of wonky sidewalk. This is the actual sidewalk, and it does not follow the road. And I can't, I tried to do some research on it. I can't quite figure out how it came to be. And with the Assistant Town Engineer being out, he has some legacy knowledge, but I still could not understand or find out how that sidewalk veered off that far and kind of bifurcated those folks' front yards. So looking easterly, this is the only part of Hazard Ave, in this section, that has a sidewalk. So that's why we, there are a couple of reasons why we chose to keep the easterly side and to remove the westerly side. Again, that's the only place with a sidewalk that leads into it. Now, on the westerly side, again, there's no other sidewalks that go here. There's no crosswalks. There's nothing. It kind of just dies off into nowhere. As you drive down, again, as you turn into Martin Terrace and proceed northerly, again, no snow shelf, very tight street, under 20, I think it's 21 or 22 feet wide, very, very, very tight. So again, what we do, we would remove this side all the way down, and we would shift the road over accordingly, put a five-foot snow shelf basically from this alignment coming over here, and that's where we would have this, again, be a pile of snow, and that would be like a grass area. Again, back to that weird kind of, how the sidewalk kind of veers off here. You can see, right where my mouse is, it just kind of goes off. I don't really know the reason. If somebody knows, that'd be wonderful to tell me, because I can't find anything anywhere upstairs, even upstairs, to figure out why that happened. But what we propose to do is tune up this alignment a little bit, make it to standards, and have the sidewalk follow the road alignment and bring it out over to this side and give that back basically to the folks. And you can see here how far off that road is that sidewalk runs. Over here, we would again, we would move, the edge of the sidewalk would be here, snow shelf would be here, and basically right about here would be the roadway, and this would be returned, some of it would be returned to grass on the westerly side. As you come around the corner, we would pick that, we would still follow this curve. Then eventually, it, we would follow this all the way up to the corner, where it now intersects with Elm Street sidewalks, which go also north, north-south, if you will, at that point. So preliminary plans have it, again, showing you this kind of dash or this hatch here is the proposed sidewalk for right now. And this is a four-and-a-half, five-foot-wide snow shelf. You can see the road here is only 21 feet wide as it is. So packing another part in there, it's going to be just, it's just really tight. And we have the opportunity, with council's blessing, to kind of correct some of the engineering deficiencies from the past. So again, right here in light gray, that's where that sidewalk veers off and it follows the property lines. We would have that mimic the roadway going around. There's your five-foot shelf there and have its turn and have it spin into, back into Elm Street. So that is what I'm asking for. Again, we're just aware of other situations that we had, similar to Abbey Road. We just want to make sure all the councilors know where we're at or where the DPW is at. So again, there was no issues later on during construction or the like.
Thank you, Donald. Councilman Ludwig.
Thank you, Donald. Appreciate it. And again, to your point on Abbey Road, I know the resolution doesn't authorize it, but I would suggest we have a public hearing just to make sure. I mean, that was one of the big issues on Abbey Road. They didn't have a chance to speak before that went in. So this road, I mean, those sidewalks, those photos don't do the, how terrible of a shape those sidewalks are in. And so my suggestion is I don't, I agree with what your recommendation is, but I mean, I don't know if we can amend the resolution, have a public hearing, just to let those folks show up. That's, I think, the lesson learned from Abbey, is that those folks didn't get a chance to speak yea or nay against it. And I'd rather, to your point, I mean, if this seems completely reasonable, I understand that that road's in tough shape. I mean, it is one of the worst roads left in town that haven't been done. And those sidewalks are, I mean, it is, if you've taken a walk there, it is, it's dangerous. I mean, it's, but I'd rather, if we could, have a public hearing first. I know that may delay, but I don't think it'll delay any work yet, but I'm not sure if it, you know, and then let people speak. So then when, if this is the decision to go, we had the public hearing, they had a chance to speak, no one can say, hey, how come I don't have a sidewalk in front of my yard anymore? Or I'm getting a sidewalk, or you know what I mean? Or we're realigning the sidewalk. That was, that's been there, to your point, for so long, I don't know the answer either. But like I said, it's a very unique road. So that'd just be my suggestion.
I might interject on that point. You have spoken to the residents. How many residents are affected here, Mr. Nunes?
On the westerly side, there was informal discussions, again, with, again, with engineering staff. And one of the, one resident on that westerly side was not in favor of it.
Oh, you've spoken to everybody else?
Yes.
Not that we shouldn't do the public hearing, I just wanted to make sure we did learn, and we wanted to make sure that, from Public Works referral, that Donald, they spoke.
Again, I appreciate the fact that you are, and there's other issues in town that you and your staff have actually, like we did, you did on Simon Road, we were actually going to people's doors, which again, a great job, you know, the fact that you're willing and your staff to hand, hey, FYI, this is going to change. And that's why I don't want to put your staff as in the middle of this. One person, if they have a public hearing, they have a right to come up and tell us why they don't like it. That's just my suggestion. And then I think that takes you guys out of it, and then it's our decision, you know, how we align it. But again, thank you. And again, I appreciate you and your staff doing some of the things you've done, actually going directly to residents on some of the things that you've been working on. So thank you. I didn't mean to imply that, sorry.
No, no, no. I just wanted to clarify, because there's another item coming where we're going to hand-deliver to every resident the change, because we're very, we're sensitive to this. So I just wanted you to know, I don't object to the public hearing. Input is always good. But I just wanted you to understand that Donald and his staff had reached out, and I think 14 out of 15 were in agreement. But that's not to say there are others who could be impacted that don't live there directly that might have a differing opinion. So I leave it to count. Donald, what would the timeframe be? Would that impact you if you were able to do that soon?
It's still going to hold, I mean, whatever that delay is between the time we have the hearing and what the, coming back to council. So if it's another couple of months, it may not be ready for, it may not be ready for construction this week.
Can you hand-deliver that street, letters to both sides of the street before next council meeting?
Yes.
Like within the next week?
Right.
So they have a week. So if the council gives consensus and you can get a letter hand-delivered to each one of those residents, we will put it on the next agenda and we will vote on it next meeting, because this has been dragging out for quite some time. And to be clear, he does not have to come to the council for this.
Right.
But he is, out of respect of what happened previously, and I appreciate that, he brought it to DPW, and we said, we're not making a decision. It's coming here. So, and that's how things are supposed to work.
What we'll do, we'll have them do the letter to say that it's the intent to discontinue them and that they have, would have an opportunity to come. We'll give the date to Public Communication on the February meeting, so they specifically know they can come that evening early and be heard if they so choose.
And they can see the presentation, maybe put before and after picture in the, whatever. You handle that.
All right.
But if there's consensus for that?
Yes.
Then I'll entertain a motion to table this.
Still moved.
And we're going to, all in favor of tabling? And then we'll add to next.
Have it for the next meeting.
Yep. Thank you.
To be, just to be abundantly clear, we're not going on the public hearing group, because that involves Sheila.
Right, not a formal, right.
We're just going to be, looks informal at.
It's going to be a public hearing at 6:55.
Beginning.
At 6:55 or whatever, 6:45.
Yeah.
Where that's all this discussion is about, is this sidewalk project.
That we're there first, they know what it is, they can come up. If not, we close it, and then the council can take action later.
Sheila, you can get this.
Excuse me, I need a vote. You would need to amend, I need a vote to set a public hearing, unless you invited residents to come up just during public participation to speak on how they feel. But for a public hearing, I have to have a vote setting the public hearing, and then I've got to get it in the newspaper.
See, I would rather do what I had suggested, because if we do that, it is going to, because we have to now vote for the public hearing. Next time, we have to publish for the public, then have, that would throw it off. So with your permission, as long as we let them know that they'll be first heard at Public Communication at the meeting in February, and we'll take it first, and they know, it really would be the same thing. But that's up to you.
Well, there's only one person who's, and it, right, and it's backwards, because he wants the sidewalks. So, yeah, if we do that, and you're okay.
So I withdraw that suggestion. Thank you for the public hearing, and I thank you for your willing, yes, we'll have it. We'll make them, that'll be in the next agenda to vote. And thank you for your staff hand-delivering.
So they'll be at public participation or public comment at the next council meeting?
We're requesting they come.
Okay.
So we can hear their opinion.
We'll work with you tomorrow, Donald, on the language at our staff meeting. So you have it down.
Privilege of the floor, Mr. Mayor.
Again, Donald, thank you. Thank you.
Right. Or, I mean, John, they could email the council or you or whoever, you know, they don't have to actually come, because it's not a public hearing. So just email their concerns.
Privilege of the floor, Mr. Mayor.
What's that, Tom?
May have the privilege of the floor.
Sure.
Okay, with regard to this, the only thing I want to address is hand-delivered. When you mentioned it's hand-delivered, I'm assuming that you mean hand-delivered to the abode of the people that live there, because if somebody's not home, you don't mean hand-delivered, like it's got to be personally in hand to each owner, but delivered to the place of abode, because there's some people, and they may be in Florida, wherever they are. But by hand-delivered, then it's meant to their residence's place of abode.
That's why he's town attorney.
Thank you.
Because he clarifies my language. Thank you, Tom. Good point. All right, all set. Thank you, Donald. Okay, next is a funding allocation to the Enfield Police Department Auxiliary and Explorer Programs. Motion to waive the reading?
Motion to waive the reading.
Second.
All in favor of waiving the reading? Okay, so this is, this resolution will have, I don't think that's correct. It says no impact on the FY25 budget. And I believe it does have an impact on the budget, because this money is not coming out of the police department's budget. Correct?
I need to defer that to Mr. Wilcox.
Right. So the recommendation is that the town council approve the resolution. I hereby certify the above stated funds are available as of January 17th, 2025, by John Wilcox, Director of Finance. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from General Fund, non-departmental charges, transfers out and contingency, $6,000, to Police Services Uniforms, $6,000. contingency, $6,000 to Police Services Uniforms, $6,000. Date prepared, 1/13/2025, prepared by Chief Arlick J. Fox.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded. First, I got to say, when I put this through, Police Services Uniforms is in your budget, correct, Chief?
A uniform account for the police department at large is in the account, yes. This is the money that if the council chooses to authorize it, as discussed at the last meeting, would go into that account to properly equip or further equip these two organizations.
Right. But the point that I wanted it a separate line item, not within your budget, is because I don't want the money cut. If your, if your department takes a cut or doesn't get the increase they need, then you, like the Board of Education, you can cut anywhere you want within your budget. These particular programs, I wanted a separate line item in the budget so nobody could cut this funds, cut these funds from them other than this town council. It's like school sports, same thing. You know, Board of Education, first thing they're going to do is try to hit something hard that's going to upset the parents. Sports, well, I'm trying to eliminate that from happening, and it takes it off your plate so you don't even have to worry about it. It's a council decision. So when I first brought this up, I said, it's own line item in the budget. 3,000 Explorers, 3,000 to Auxiliary.
We can do that going forward for the next, right, for the next budget. But in this, John, instead of creating accounts that don't exist, it would take much more time and be more complicated. I'll list it in the next budget separately. But as you understand though too, Mr. Mayor, any future council can cut any line item from any budget.
They won't. I have faith. This is a great program.
But we'll do that in the next budget.
All right. Any other questions? Councilman Ludwig.
Yeah, Chief, so just want to make sure I'm not, so what, was this funded in this line item prior years and it, because of the cuts this year it wasn't? Just want to be clear.
Correct. There was no funding for these programs this year.
Because I'm looking in the past, I have the budget in front of me, and we went from 170,000 to 222 to 216,000. I understand there were some ups and downs over the years. At one point, 328,000 in Budget 24. So it looks like you asked for 232, we allocated 216. So you're saying the uniforms were in that $16,000 cut that was made? I just want to be clear because I agree. I want to make sure that if we have a separate line item here or another budget item, then again, I have to, I want to be clear that, because this is coming out of contingency, and the mayor's right, this does impact our budget. Because again, we're taking it out of contingency. We had this little conversation earlier about contingency. So this is technically not in your budget now. And so I want to make sure when we get to the budget next year that, you know, so I guess I'm just, I know I'm kind of getting around here, but is that the 16 grand that was cut was the uniforms for this program?
There's considerable flux in the budget, including in the uniform account year to year, based on prices, based on the number of officers that we anticipate onboarding and the cost of new issue, the cost of reissue, the cost of replacement vests, which is an example, is just an item that really tends to ebb and tide based on who's at that five-year mark. I do know that in the last budget, as we calculated the overall number that was presented to you in that account, that these were items that in totality hit the chopping block.
Okay, all right.
I mean, to parse the individual items, I need to go back and go through all of those notes.
No, appreciate it, yeah.
I appreciate the tenor of the question. Unfortunately, there's just a lot of variables that go into that line item.
Got it. Thank you.
Chief, real quick, the, the SSO program?
Yes, sir.
Their uniforms and stuff?
Yes, sir.
Is that a reflection in this same line item?
It's funny because we were working on that just today, conversations with Mr. Wilcox. So the uniforms and the equipment for the SSOs was allocated by the council in the previous budget cycle. You allocated enough money for 28 SSOs to be onboarded. We did not hire 28 SSOs, so the amount of money that was spent was less than that dollar amount, largely as a product of going from a lot of part-timers to fewer full-timers. As we have recently onboarded the additional allotment of SSOs, which incidentally is down one from the last time we spoke, I think I did jinx us, we are now working with Mr. Wilcox to make sure that the money that's available to outfit those individuals from two budgets ago is still in fact available. And I'm working with him because it appears that budget cycle was just closed out, and I just spent the money, and that was part of today's discussions. So the short answer to your question is my current uniform allotment would not cover the SSOs, the one that we're entering into now, that's the previous year.
Right, okay. Go ahead, Mike.
So Chief, just to be clear, the six grand will be able to cover any new uniforms of both Auxiliary and Explorers, is that correct?
It will not cover, it will, I don't want to sound ungrateful.
No, no.
It will not remotely cover all of their needs, but it will be used to help outfit both of these organizations. And if at some point it's appropriate, I'd like to introduce these two people. That doesn't need to be now.
No, that's what I'm saying, right. I allocate the money, just want to make sure it takes care of-
Yes, sir. Hats, hat badges, uniforms. These two function, these two functions largely either finance themselves, finance themselves with fundraisers, or in some cases, in some cases, it's hand-me-down, and I mean, not gently-used hand-me-down either. And I know in some cases, money gets spent out of pocket to provide uniforms, to provide service to this community for free.
Right. I think our intent is whatever they need, because my concern, and I had a conversation, is like training. Certain cadets, I'll say, or explorers, they can't afford the training. So they do fundraising, officers, you know, they, they do what they can do to help these children out. And I said, these are children that have a dream and they have a goal in life, and I'm not going to let, you know, the cost of them going to training deter the dream of becoming a police officer. Because one of our biggest success stories is sitting right behind you right now. So when I, I will say that was probably the best dinner that this organization ever put on. Because when I was made aware of this situation, it came right back here immediately, and that's why we're here today.
Thank you.
And I thank you guys for everything you do. I know you're going to speak, but it means a lot, what you guys do. Cindy.
Thank you, Chief, and to all the explorers. Phenomenal program. We do need to continue to support, and I agree, ugh, can't say this with our mayor, that, you know, we have to do what we have to do. But I just want to understand this better. So without this line item, without this money, the young people have been doing fundraising and paying out of pocket?
The explorers are largely self-sufficient with donations they receive for the considerable work that they do in the town. The auxiliaries in the last year received one donation, $1,300, and that is not enough to equip them to the standard that they should be equipped to.
Okay.
The money is largely fungible, right? It comes in from different sources, and then we buy what we need to buy consistent with what is available. And in neither program do we rely, have we relied this year on town funds, in neither program are they turning a profit. So they do have to get creative through sweat equity, if you will, through both programs where they get donations in kind. The explorers tend to get more for lesser amounts, the auxiliaries tend to get fewer, perhaps in one case, a larger amount. But in, but in neither case are either of the programs ahead of what they need to be funded from a training, development, equipment point of view.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I, yes, I did. Thank you, Mayor. Chief?
Sir.
What would be the number? I know explorers, they vary in your number, number of auxiliary officers that you have vary. But what would be the actual cost to outfit an explorer?
It is somewhat a moving target because we do provide them where we can with used, turned-in, for example, leather gear that we would no longer consider serviceable for a uniformed, sworn, paid police officer. And I apologize for how that sounds because we value both of the programs, and I don't want to make it sound like we're handing out the junk to other programs. But, but the short answer to your question is the 2024, focusing on the explorers, the 2024 program cost in total was 16,669.50, and what they received was 11,243.00. So that's one year. It ebbs and tides over time, but that year is an example, they were at a deficit of approximately $5,300. And, and we, we make it work. I value the program, and I recognize that all of you are indicating you value the program. So no one is, no one is coming before you in any way pushy. We make it work. But the short answer to the question, focusing on just the explorers for a moment, 16,669.50, 11,243, it's an approximate difference of $5,400 or so. The same situation with the auxiliary program. They, they earned, they received a donation of $1,300. Their expenses are really whatever we could afford to buy for them, and we raise or lower that based on the money that's available.
Okay, okay, thank you. Because I was thinking about, I know that we're allocating 6,000, but 10,000 probably would be better for you, wouldn't it?
I would not say no, but I would, I am not in any way ungrateful for the 6,000 that is being discussed.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Jeff?
Chief?
Sir.
If it's okay, Mr. Mayor, can you introduce your, your staff?
Thank you, sir. I'd be very happy to. Ladies and gentlemen, you are familiar with both programs, perhaps in a more philosophical sense, but to my right and to my left are the faces of the program. To my right, your left, is Police Auxiliary Lieutenant Lauren Van Fossen. Lieutenant Van Fossen commands the nine members of the auxiliary program. That program is for individuals, as you know, who are 18 years of age and older. They assist with traffic control, parade, road race assistance, the Fourth of July celebration, package and mail delivery, including to, to all of you, and at scene support for our full-time sworn officers. I cannot help but reflect on the fact that you quite, with quite a degree of appreciation on everyone's part, lauded Captain Matt Biljen recently for his incredible service to this community, and that was very much appreciated. There are nine Captain Matt Biljens that I have the pleasure of working with, and before you is Lieutenant Van Fossen, who represents those nine individuals. To your right, my left, is Police Explorer Captain Penelope Humphrey. Captain Humphrey joins us, and I will tell you, she has school in the morning, right? She has school in the morning, and she is here this evening, as are her parents, in the back of the room, who drive her to these meetings and pick her up after these meetings, and this is the definition of success in this program. Captain Humphrey commands the 18 individuals who are in our Explorer program, running the age from 13 to 20 years of age. They assisted similar town events, and quite notably, they simultaneously learn the expectations and the requirements associated with the public service profession. I don't mind bragging a little bit, and I hope I get this right. If I understand it properly, after graduation, Captain Humphrey intends to enlist in the United States Army.
Yes, sir.
And thereafter, has an eye toward returning to law enforcement, I believe in the town of Enfield.
Yes, sir.
If I was allowed to do this by Human Resources, I would be like a baseball scout in the Dominican. I'd be signing her, I'd be signing her to a contract right now to get her to promise to, to get her to promise to come to work for this agency. We referenced the success stories of this agencies a moment ago. You know, if, if something awful happens tonight, Detective Lieutenant Petamonte is going to get woken up, and he's a success of this program. I'm not going anywhere in the short term, but in the long term, I would, I have every anticipation of offering my support, as I believe you would, for my replacement seated in the second row behind me. I would predict for you that 10 or 20 or 30 years from now, people will be saying the same things about Captain Humphrey. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce both of these individuals to you.
All right. And Captain Humphrey, you did a great job with that National Anthem at the event the other night, too. So awesome. So Chief, I understand that this funding here, the resolution for equipment, uniforms, is not going to completely take care of all the costs.
Yes, sir.
I do have a question about the, you talked about fundraising, question about that, the Cadet Explorer Camp, which is phenomenal, the one at Westwood State. I've been able to partake in that myself in that over the years. It's just awesome. How, how is that funded? Is that through fundraising?
That is through the, that is through the donations that we receive in total. I mean, I can give you the, I can give you the detailed breakdown if you'd like me to get that granular.
So I know it's, it's kind of an expensive-
It is expensive. That is, I mean, everything they do is funded with their fundraising money. Dues, Skills Day, Stations Day, the Explorer Academy, and then the Windsor Cadets Event, total $9,495. It is their single largest expense for the Explorer Program. That, along with the Family Night Event, the Family Night Event that we all enjoyed, The minimal amount that they spend on equipment, $1,604.94. One yearly gathering, just for them, $909. So they run expenses of $16,699 against donations of 11,243. Yes, it's a wonderful event. I've gone to it as well, but it does come with a, it does come with a price.
Right, and thank you for that information. I guess what I'm getting at, too, is, is every explorer able to meet their fundraising goal and able to attend? Like meaning is, is nobody left out that wants to go?
So there's a few things we do to help out with that. We only have to pay half of the amount that we are expected as opposed to pay. So LT and our program, what we get for donations, pay about $350 out of the $750 it is for each person to go to this academy. Every month, we also have the Doug Humphrey Scholarship that I pay for, which helps one explorer. And so we do the best we can to help everybody who wants to go, go. LT always says, if people need help, to go talk to him, and he definitely figures out ways to help everybody else who need it.
Okay. Thank you, Captain.
Of course.
Thank you, Captain.
All set, Jeff?
Hartford Police is an option, too, Chief. I love Enfield, but-
There's going to be a bidding war. I can feel the coming.
Jeff, you're an Enfield council member right now, okay? Priorities.
I might talk to the Hartford recruitment team in the morning here.
All right. So, okay, so, great explanation. Can you give us the same thing for the Auxiliary? You know, we see them every Friday night, or every other Friday night, at our doors dropping off the packets. They are in the cruisers, they are, you know, doing traffic control and stuff like that. I think they have more of a responsibility as a police officer than the explorers do because they're working to that way. So same synopsis for them?
Their expenses are largely uniform equipment and gear, with no funding source immediately available within the town budget. We equip them as best we can with what we have available. It's, it's, it's old gear and old equipment that frankly is stored in a trailer, one of the convex boxes in the back of the PD, where we do everything we can to, to equip them. The only source of income, by way of example, in the last year was one $1,300 donation- For Town Fair? From the For Town Fair Committee for the work that they do there. But, but they, and no way am I minimizing what the explorers do, but it is a slightly different world. These folks are out there on the side of the road in the dark with people dressed like me or the deputy chief, in the soup, so to speak, if it, if it is ever necessary. And that's what we certainly have to work to avoid with the explorers. So their assistance is, is highly valuable, and it is what we would call hazardous duty in the biz, done for free.
So they collect no money, not one cent?
Other than donations.
Other, right. And for the work that they do for the town, which does help alleviate the pressure on the police officers, they receive nothing?
Correct.
The Fourth of July, they receive nothing.
Correct.
So they are giving back to our community huge. And, and, you know, the explorers, the goal is they're going to roll to auxiliary, then roll into a police officer, then deputy chief, and sorry, chief, but someday they're going to be sitting where you are.
And I could ask for nothing more than that.
Right. And that is the success of the program, and that's why you're here. And I wanted to know- And I wanted to know the difference between the two cost-wise, because I heard what you said, Bob, and this is huge for our community. And I think, and maybe I'm wrong, I think the explorer's needs financially is a little more than the auxiliary.
I think that's a fair statement.
All right. Because auxiliary use are older cruisers?
They use, likely, yes, the best available on any given shift, but that would tend to generally be older gear, older equipment.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
So I've always been a big supporter of the program and the auxiliary. And I think tonight is awesome because we are letting the entire town know how important these two groups are to Enfield. And I am sure there are people out there tonight that are listening and didn't realize that this was not a fully funded, that these kids and young women, sorry, I don't want to use the word kids, young women and men are supporting this themselves with their family's help. So there are people out there right now saying, I want to help. How can they help? Do they call the police station, talk to you, Officer Petamonte? What should they be doing if people would like to donate to this organization?
Well, donations are received effectively under Lieutenant Petamonte's umbrella, Detective Lieutenant Petamonte's umbrella, yes. As you know, when donations are made to the town, the town proper, this has me coming before you and asking for authorization to receive that in order to keep everything very much on the up and up. But both of these organizations have standing accounts, much like the K-9 program, that have been previously blessed years ago by the town council. So in the event that anyone did feel that generous, Detective Lieutenant Petamonte or I return all my own phone calls and emails.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I am encouraging everybody out there in TV land, if you see this group working and you appreciate what they do, every donation, no matter how big or how small, will be appreciated.
And similarly, membership. I thank you for the opportunity to showcase both of these groups.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They do a great job. Thank you.
Councilman Santinella.
Real quick, because the captain has to go to school. So, and I'd like to go to bed at some point tonight. So you do have fundraising events?
Yes, we do.
So you have a picnic, right?
Yes, we have our annual pig roast.
And is that the big one?
Yes, that's actually our only, you know, we consider a fundraiser.
Which is in May or June?
June.
June. So maybe next time, when you're planning that, come here, let us know that you're having your fundraising event, and that way we could get the word out to people that the event is happening imminently, and they can contribute to that, which might make it a little bit easier for people to contribute. Chief, any way to quantify the number of man-hours we're talking about between these two groups? You have that, don't you?
It is estimated that if each explorer.
I did not call him beforehand.
If each explorer worked every assignment offered and attended every Monday night meeting, they would work a total of 320 hours in a calendar year. And bear in mind, these are largely students aged 13 to 18. So this is a part-time job, but it's on top of all the other obligations that I think we all had between 13 and 18.
So at, you know, at roughly minimum wage, we're looking at.
320 times.
$4,500. I just, I have a calculator. So $4,500 per explorer, the value that we are getting from this group theoretically is far more than the $6,000 that we're talking about.
I think that's fair to say.
Yeah.
And, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
And similarly, for the auxiliaries, if they worked every assignment offered and attended every monthly meeting, they would work a total of 400 hours in a given calendar year. This would include Friday and Saturday nights on patrol, the Four Town Fair, the Fourth of July Celebration, the Mount Carmel Celebration, and all of our parades and road races.
Yeah. So, you know, fantastic. You guys do an amazing job, and we all appreciate it. And, you know, there are things we agree on. This is one of them, and I think you and I were both moved after the event that we went to, as was everybody else. You called, said we got to do something. I said I'm in, and we were all in, so I just want to say thank you for putting money back in for this. It was disappointing when it got cut, so I just want to say thank you.
It's, you know, it's taking a step back, but it's realizing, you know, there are some serious costs with decisions that we make up here, and, you know, when I'm wrong, I have no problem going back and trying to make it right. And, you know, maybe it was a good thing because we saw what a great program this is and how it's, I'm going to use the word neglected by this town for many years, and it's time that stops. Because I consider you guys part of the town, the future of this community, and I want you to believe in us as much as we believe in you. Just one more thing, and Councilman Santinella kind of hit this. You have to go to school tomorrow. Is part of you maintaining active status, your academics? Do they?
So like you guys have, most of you had went to the pig roast, the Family Night, had seen, we get those awards. We do have an award for academics, so the person with the highest GPA or grades will get that award.
So if you're failing out of school, you still can be part of this program?
From what I've known in the almost five years that I've been in this program, we've never had anything like that happen.
Beautiful.
And I am sure Detective Lieutenant Petamonte, the deputy chief, and I would intercede appropriately encouraging an improved performance.
So, again, I don't want to mention the name, but I will thank the officer who did approach me at that dinner and was very clear about it. And I had no idea about the funding to begin with and the ramifications that came with it, and that's why we're here today. I spoke with everybody, and as far as I know, we're unanimous on this. We're about to find out. Bob, I heard what you said about the 10,000, but we're in budget in six months. So this being a permanent line item, at least while I'm sitting here, we can discuss the number at that time, but this will get them to July. So, seeing no more questions, roll call, please.
Counselor Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nisuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Russo.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
And Counselor Ungeyer.
Four.
Eleven members in favor, none against.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate the opportunity to showcase these individuals and these programs. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to thank your parents, too, because I know my grandkids play hockey and bringing them back and forth and everything. This doesn't work without the parents behind you supporting you, so thank you, Mom and Dad. Next is the resolution authorizing the town manager to sign an easement from the town to the state of Connecticut for property on Shaker Road. Be it resolved that Christopher W. Bromson, town manager, or his designee, is authorized to sign the attached easement from the town of Enfield to the state of Connecticut. Date prepared 1/9/2025, Office of Town Attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Questions? Roll call.
Counselor Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nisuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Russo.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
And Counselor Ungeyer.
Four.
Eleven members in favor, none against.
Okay. Next is the resolution to authorize a waiver of the property maintenance fines for 10 Booth Road. The recommendation is the council approve this resolution if they desire to waive the current property maintenance fines at 10 Booth Road. Be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize a waiver of $56,724 in property maintenance fines and the release of the property maintenance lien for the property at 10 Booth Road. Date prepared 1/10/2025, prepared by the Office of Economic and Community Development.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded. This one, the people received a notification several years ago about some trash on the side of the house and a section of the stockade fence that was down. Within two weeks, they had rectified the situation, but we did not have anything in the notices that said you need to call for reinspection. Fines started and continued and went and went and went and went, and that's why it's here. And if they had known the proper procedure, which we have taken care of in blight, everybody will get that in the notice. They wouldn't have gotten a $1 fine because it was fixed within the 30 days. So blight was unanimous on sending it through. John, if you want to add anything?
No, we said it all.
We're good. Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nisuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Russo.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
And Counselor Ungeyer.
Four.
Eleven members in favor, none against.
Thank you, Sheila. And then next is the resolution to approve a three-year collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local 671. This contract calls for a one-time retroactive market adjustment wage increase of $2.50 an hour on July 1, 2024, a wage increase of $1 an hour on July 1, 2025, and a wage increase of $1 an hour on July 1, 2026. The town is also receiving a reduction in health insurance costs over the three-year contract from the Teamsters Union and a grant money from the state to help subsidize the costs. The overall estimated net increase to the town budget over a three-year period is $25,732, which equals $8,577, or 2.3% annually. Recommendation is we approve this resolution, and be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council does hereby approve the three-year collective bargaining agreement between the town of Enfield and the Teamsters Local 671 dated July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027.
So moved.
Date prepared 1/13/2025, prepared by Stephen Belinda.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded. This is our magic carpet, dial-a-ride drivers and stuff like that. And, you know, it's getting tough because we're competing against all the school bus companies now. They're all offering benefits, higher pay, and if we want to keep these programs alive, I want to thank Steve for working out the details. I want to thank this particular Teamster group for coming to the table and working with us, and we made it happen. And that's what happens when we sit in a room and just work through things and come up with an answer, and here we are. So anybody else? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Crissati, um, Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nisuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Russo.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
And Counselor Ungeyer.
Four.
Eleven in favor, none against.
Thank you, Sheila. And we're moving on. Items for discussion, so in DPW Subcommittee, it came to us, it's that time of year to discuss the cost of your second tipper barrel fee to dump it, and the cost of a resident to purchase a second tipper barrel. So Donald's going to bring us what the town's costs are. He does not have to come to us. He can make this decision, but we felt that the council should know what's going on and, you know, have some input on whether or not we go up or not. Donald, thank you.
Yep. So on the screen, we have the last two years of, again, how much we paid. During '23, we had a different contract that was used, and it was, the delivery costs were included with it. And this newer contract, it is, delivery cost is second to that, or added to it. So they're averaging about, again, you can see, we were paying about $61.70 per barrel to get delivered to DPW. We are currently, now, this is just for the barrel itself, the physical plastic barrel, regardless of the color. We're charging $60 for that. The price does not include any of the assembly time, which takes about 10 minutes to come together because we have to put the wheels on, the axle, the top, and whatever, and it does not include homeowner delivery, and it does not include repair parts with that. So if we can repair them, a lot of times, we'll try to cannibalize ones that have come in with a broken sides or something, and has a good top, we'll try to cannibalize it. If it's within the 10 years, we try to fix it, and if it's not, and if it's unfixable, we have the resident purchase it. But right now, we're not even covering our costs with the $60 right now. So that's why we were, and again, it's that time of the year. March is coming. That's when the ordinance kicks in for the second barrel and for this as well. So I present that for you for discussion.
This is just for the cost of the second barrel alone. This is not the yearly charge for that second barrel. So that's where we are. Go ahead, Mike.
So, say, resident has one barrel. You know, to replace, if that one needs to be replaced, is there a cost to the resident?
Yes.
Right, so how much is that?
That's the $60 that we're charging right now.
So then if they purchase a second one?
It's another $60.
Another $60, right.
Right.
Plus dumping.
Right. This is just for the.
Replace the barrel.
This is just for the physical cost of the barrel. You know, somebody runs it over, you run it over, or.
You said it doesn't cover your cost. What is your cost?
Our costs are in between $75 and $80 for one barrel.
For what you just described for the service?
Correct.
That's delivered to the homeowner.
And so right now, whether they're getting the barrel for free, the first one or the second one, we're not covering our cost.
That's correct.
Right, okay.
It was always meant to be sort of as a break even or whatever it was, but we're not at that point right now. So we're, I've just said, we're falling behind.
Right, so for me, it's too, I know, we always talk about the second barrel, to pay for it every year, the goal is to cover the cost of it.
That's the next slide I got.
Again, I'm okay with, again, we should be break even. So, you know, so if it's 80 bucks or 75 bucks, then I, for here, I'd be okay going to 75, if that's what your cost, again, that's what we've always said, to cover the cost.
Correct.
Not to make money. I mean, because I know this is a sensitive item for folks when we, even going 15 years ago, when we went from, you know, the cost of the barrels and my taxes and everything else. So I think for both items, for me, I'm willing to cover at cost. If that's 75 bucks, and I, if that's what it is, then, yeah, I think I'd be okay with that, for me personally.
And that's why I've said I'm bringing it up to you folks here, so you understand.
And the next one, whatever the next cost is, I'm okay with whatever that cost is. Cover it.
Go ahead, John.
I just want to understand, so the cost is for the physical barrel, but it has nothing to do with what we have to pay to dispose of what's in the barrel?
That's the next slide coming up that I was talking about.
Got it, okay. There's more to this. We're not just.
There's more to it. There's just one more.
Never mind.
There's one more, and I'll try to be as quick as possible.
So I was involved with the original committee when we went with the pilot program for the one-armed bandit trash trucks with the tipper barrels. I was actually in the pilot neighborhood, and people were very upset about having to pay for a garbage can. And simple words, you've always had to pay for a garbage can. And simple words, you've always had to pay for a garbage can. Nobody ever gives you anything. Everybody always had to buy their own garbage can. And where do you get a garbage can with a 10-year warranty on it? So it saved the town money with workers' comp and everything, because years ago, that was huge. So, again, I agree with you, Mike, covering the cost, we're not making money off the barrels. But if you went to Home Depot or Lowe's or, shouldn't have said a name, but anyways, you're paying that, about that kind of money to get that same quality barrel. You can get cheaper and you can get more, but, so, I mean, if, if the consensus is, you know, 75 is cost and that's what we want to go to, well, then, I mean, it should be. You know? What do you guys think? It's a separate issue. It's totally separate.
Can I ask?
Yep.
Then I'd like to.
Donald, so if a barrel gets hit like a car and gets damaged by no fault of the homeowner or a barrel gets stolen, who eats that cost?
If, if we damage it again with a truck or if it falls into the, into the hopper, we can't get it out or if it crushes it, we, we give that person that, one from us. But if it's anything outside of us, they pay for it.
So even if it's stolen with a police report, the homeowner is still responsible for that?
I haven't had one with a, stolen one with a police report. We've just had sort of weird things with somebody got, you know, maybe a neberated driver knocked one out or took one out and stuff like that that wasn't their fault, but we've had plenty of those. It's just not, we haven't had that situation come up, so. But that's typically what we do, and anything, anything that we can verify after 10 years, even though people say that they thought they were lifetime barrels, they're not, we don't cover that as well. So anything, because we, we've kept records for every single one up to 10 years, and we're good, so.
Okay, thank you.
No, actually, Gina, did you have something?
No, I just, I understand you're saying it's a separate, I want to see it before I tell you if I'm good with whatever.
Okay, Cindy?
Donald, just for clarification, I know in our Subcommittee meeting, we talked about the first barrel and the second barrel. This is the first barrel, correct?
Any barrel.
Any barrel.
It doesn't matter what barrel it is. If you need another barrel.
We also talked about, currently, a resident is paying $120?
That's the, that's the sec, that's the next slide.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, we're getting there.
Thank you. Thank you. I didn't want to jump the gun, but I wanted.
No. We're getting there.
Next slide's for free.
All right, so, because Gina wants to see the next slide, which I think the two do go hand-in-hand, but go ahead.
All right, so currently, we are charging a resident $120 if they want a second MSW, so municipal solid waste tag. So if they want a second trash barrel, they pay currently $120. Our tipping fee is going to increase in FY '26 to $119.18 per ton, and that price is not included, again, the fuel to run it and any of the extra time we drive to pick up barrels or whatever it is. There's none of that towards that as well. We sold 751 second barrel tags last year to date, sorry, last year. So that's, again, we're $120, and we're asking to go up.
John?
So I just want to try to understand, right? So if you have a second barrel, or for one wooden barrel, per barrel, and it's full every week and it's tipped every week at your house, do you have any idea what is the total volume that's coming out of there? I, I know it fluctuates, but.
To do this, to, to get to this price that we derived the first time, we did two or three-week study on different routes, different whatever. We counted, we have inside of every single truck, except for the two-man truck or the rear loaders, has a counter on it. So every time that that arm comes up, there's a actual counter, and it's just like the one you click like this, but it does it automatically. So we know how many tips there were, we know the tonnage of that truck, so we divided it all out. It comes out that the typical person will, a typical year of a 96-gallon barrel is about a ton, is one ton of trash.
It's one ton, one ton over the.
That's why the original thing was to cover that one, was for one ton.
And so is this $119 including the previous slide or in addition to the previous slide?
This is for the, for you to have a second barrel to tip.
Build the garbage can.
Actually, for us to come pick it up and dump it.
Got it. So.
No garbage can.
Okay. But, so the total cost is the $60 or $75 plus the additional $119?
Or one, right, or whatever the new.
$120 for an additional ton of garbage that is going to go in that.
Correct.
That's the total cost.
Most people already have their second and third barrels, so they wouldn't have to buy a garbage can. This is to get the tag for the can that they already own.
I get it. I'm, I'm just trying, I'm, I'm just trying to quantify. We all get one thing at no cost, right? We all get one thing. Got it. I'm just trying to quantify what the incremental cost is for each additional barrel. So I, I got it. Thank you.
Good. Gina, you're good. Bob?
Thank you again, Donald, for coming here and putting it out. So it's currently $120. You're looking to raise that because the price does not include fuel and the extra time. So do you have a number what you're looking for?
The tipping fee right now, as, as of today, is $113.50. It goes up to $119.18 on July 1. It goes up.
So the $120 was based on the $113, a ton.
Correct.
You're looking at the six cents or $6 a ton.
Right. When I had a discussion during leadership, the mayor and I had a very different opinion on what the cost of the second barrel would be, and I don't want to share that with right now, but it is not. I think, again, with Deputy Mayor Pisner, also, we were talking about 100, it was 150 that was discussed.
So again, you're not trying to make money on any of this.
No, this is, it is, right now, it'll be a pass-through. It'll just, we're breaking even.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mike.
So the $120 covers your cost other than fuel? The time, I'm, I'm, sorry, that's part of the job and it's done by a machine. I'm not, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't take that. Apology, I'm just being honest. And so $125 covers it? I'm not, I'm, $150, I'm sorry, is, I don't agree with that. I want to be quite frank here.
Well, you wouldn't have agreed with my first number either.
$120 to $125? Because again, not every, not, even though people buy the second barrel, they don't put it out every week either. Some may, but most of them don't. So, I mean, it's other things, too, they're not doing it every week, and that's the, you know, the cost that someone decides to pay. And again, we've always talked about covering costs for this. That's what we've always talked about. So for me, if $125 covers the cost, I'm good with it. I'm not, I mean, I'm not, I'm not looking to make any money off the taxpayer. You know, that's just my opinion, but if, so if $125 covers it, I'm good, and you have my support on both 75 and 125. But I don't know if that, if you can answer that question here, or?
We, I was looking for 150, because again, there's more, there's admin time that is not calculated on that as well and managing all that.
I disagree, 125 you got, but if others go 150, that's up to you. Sorry, I don't agree. I mean, because we've always talked, no, but if we start adding all that in, we can do that at any cost. I'm sorry. You can do that at any cost.
Understood.
And so, I mean, there's, I'm sure the thing, there's other things you could throw in there. Well, I mean, that's part of also what you get paid for. So, I mean, I mean, I'm 100% against the 150. 125 is my best offer.
Councilman Santinella.
I feel like we're in an auction. That's right.
Do I hear 130?
So, no, no. So just, I, I just want to, just to Counselor Ludwig's point, so if it's a single-family home, maybe one week it's full, they're both full, one week it's not. But I'm thinking about, you know, multifamily homes where there's more people, there's more, that it's more likely that these barrels are going to be full every week to the max. Is that a fair assessment or not?
It just fluctuates.
It just fluctuates.
Just fluctuates.
So, so Counselor Ludwig's thought is they're not all going to go out every week. So it may not be a ton that you're disposing in every barrel. It might be something less than that.
Most people who get a second barrel have, are, they're.
They're filling it every week?
Yes.
Otherwise, there would be a need, they would, right, okay. So, so we should assume that it's, if they have the second barrel, they're filling the barrel all the time?
Correct.
Every week? Okay.
And holidays are, second barrels free? Right. Councilman, Deputy Mayor Pisner?
When was the last time we had an increase, Donald?
When, I think it was when the ordinance actually took place, like four years ago.
Four years ago. So it's been stayed this way for four years. So it's not something we do every single year?
Correct. This is just a review time, and now that I did my review, it just isn't meeting the spirit of it by kind, you know, again, making sure that we're not losing our shirt.
Okay, so I understand what you're saying, Mike, 100%. I understand that. My fear is if we go with the 125, we're going to be revisiting this next year, because that cost is going to go up again. So if it is something, and I get it, no, I'm not, I, I appreciate what you're saying. I, I see both sides of it. And we will discuss it in caucus, but, you know, again, we haven't done anything in four years. If we do the 125, we may have to revisit this much sooner than, but, all right, I just want to know that.
Thank you. Councilman Ludwig?
So, sorry, this one, because again, I was part of when we did this. I'm not budging, okay? I'm not budging, and then if we're going to do this, then we need to charge for the, we talked about the blue barrels, where everyone's getting, because the cost of getting rid of recycling is, if not more expensive than regular, you know, so, I mean, some people have four or five blue barrels, which is great. Great that you're recycling, but the cost to now dispose of that is on par or greater than regular trash. So at some point, I mean, if we're going to, we're going to have these kind of discussions, then we have to.
I don't have an next slide for that one.
But I'm just saying, we have to, again, I got to tell you, look, we take care of fuel in a, in a separate line item. I appreciate what you're doing and I respect what you're doing, but I, I mean, I'm just telling you, I'll vote no if it goes above 125. Thank you.
And I think part of, part of the original whole point of this was to discourage additional trash, okay? So that, we got to focus on that, because you're right, Mike. When you started charging for a second barrel, well, we got to pay for that. Let's just get another recycling barrel. Which now the town is looking, because you see people with four recycling barrels, and I guarantee if you go through them, it's not all recyclable. Bob?
All right, I think I'm going to get Counselor Ludwig to go to 126. As you said, it was a $6 increase per ton, so I'd like to cover the increase on the tonnage at least, Mike.
He's got to push you. He's got to push you, don't he?
I'm just, I'm not, I'm not incorrect. It's a $6 increase.
Because I think you agreed with me on the blue barrel, I think, right?
Me?
No, Gina, I think, I think, I don't want to speak for her, but.
So tonight, you just wanted to have this discussion, you want us to caucus and come back and come up with a.
No, he doesn't, he can set this himself. He just wants a direction from us.
Got it.
So DPW, we discussed it, and we weren't making this decision without you guys getting in, you know? So I, I take into account, the second barrel is additional. When, when sore use, if you use over a certain amount, you're charged a higher rate, which you guys approved, you know? And when you drive down the street and you see people with 10 recycling barrels and the cost of recycling costs more than trash, the person who puts out a half a barrel a week is paying for all those other barrels, and it's not their trash. So the cost should solely fall on that resident. You don't want to pay the money? Don't throw away six trash cans full of stuff. So I, the cover and the cost of the barrel, I agree. Whatever it costs us, zero to grandma next door who doesn't need a new tipper barrel, you know? So if it's 75 bucks, $75. Do we have consensus on that for the barrel?
75, yeah.
Yep. So you're good with 75 on the barrel, Donald?
Yep.
And now the tonnage, Bob has on the table 126 and 37 cents.
You have a gavel, Mayor, right? You can.
I'm going to hit somebody with it.
As long as it covers our cost, I'm fine.
126?
I, I mean, do I, I, I'm not sure that that's actually covering your cost, and I don't think you think that either. And I think we need to be realistic, so.
They're 130 down there.
Yeah.